Everyone, it's six P M. We're gonna bring this November third Board of Pender County Commission Meeting to order. If you would please rise for the invocation and the pleasure. Our God and Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this meeting. We thank you for each and every citizen who has came here to take part in their government. We thank you for the citizens of Pender County, the state of North Carolina, and the United States of America, the greatest country on the face of the earth. In Jesus' name we pray. And if you would, our veterans and first responders in our audience, please remain standing. So we can recognize your service. Thank you. Seems our volume is a little loud tonight, so we've had some, we've had some folks that in the past, they can't hear us online. So hopefully they'll hear us tonight, cause this bleeding in my ears. Alright. How could we adopt another agenda? Each and every commissioner had a chance to review tonight's agenda and is there any discussion?
Yes, if you will entertain adding the W M P O presentation for this evening. They're here and they've sent their information. I just didn't quite make the list, but they would love to be able to present to you all tonight.
Okay, is that satisfactory with the board? I'll entertain that motion to add W M P O's presentation only tonight for our citizens.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we add W P O presentation.
Alright.
Second.
Motion and second, those in favor, six of five seen, I raise your hand. Alright, thank you ma'am. Yes ma'am. With that, is there a motion to adopt the full agenda for tonight?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second on the table to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, six of five seen, I raise your hand. Alright. Alright, thank you so much. Item five, the public hearing, five point one, the twenty fifty comprehensive land use plan. Mr. Brantley, welcome.
Back out into the community to get some additional feedback. So we'll go back through this process. Educate the public here, re-inform the board on where we've been the past couple weeks, past few weeks with the survey. Feel free to ask questions as we go along. This may be new to a lot of people here, but the board has already heard this, so. But feel free to ask any questions as needed. So we're gonna talk about the plan process, the work that went into this. We're gonna talk about the contents of the plan and its framework. We're gonna talk about changes that came about the plan after the public review and public input was provided. Talk about the planning board endorsement from September and then consideration for adoption by the commissioners this evening. So this is a, effectively a new comprehensive land use plan for Pender County. The idea is that this plan will guide growth for years to come. Essentially, it takes a vision of the residents today and provides steps of implementation to bring that vision to life, bring that vision to a reality for all residents across the county. So the first two months we spent launching the project, and just to be clear, we've been working on this for about eighteen, nineteen months now. So the first two months was really getting the groundwork laid out for the project. Between two and eight months, we identified issues and opportunities for the county to highlight within the plan. Three to eight months, we evaluated the planning influences such as the growth trends that we're seeing, certain trends in the development community, needs in the business community, needs in the tax base area. And then eight to thirteen months, we developed the plan, drafted that plan, shared that draft with the community. And then the past six months, we've been working on finalizing that draft, getting it back out into the community, getting final feedback, and then getting it endorsed by the planning board, and now we're seeking to get approval by the Board of Commissioners before it is sent off to the state for final approval. That would be the Coastal Resources Commission. We'll talk a little bit more about that shortly. And so we're here in the last stretch of this project. And so this gives you a little bit more detailed in the, from month to month. So now we're in the twentieth month of this project in November, here hoping for adoption this evening. And you can see before you, the community engagement windows took place in month six to seven. That was when we first got out into the community with the plan. We hosted meetings in ten different locations throughout the county so that we were reaching out to a lot of those different folks. And then we did a second window between months thirteen and fifteen. We again got out throughout the county. We did five locations that time, but we certainly made sure that where we were choosing to visit was representative of the community at large. And so, the board, the planning board and the commissioners have been briefed and updated on this process throughout the past twenty months. Back in July was the, one of the most recent presentations to the board, other than what was presented last month. It went to the Division of Coastal Management for review. They gave us the okay to move forward with adoption. The planning board recommended approval of this plan on September the third. It went to the Board of Commissioners on October sixth. We had a public hearing at that time and the board decided to put it back out, open the survey back out to get some additional feedback. And then if the board chooses to move forward this evening, we'll then be forwarding it to the Coastal Resources Commission for their final endorsement. So since this is a Kama County, one of the twenty Kama Counties in the state, D C M and the Coastal Resource Commission, they have to certify that plan, being a Kama County plan. Alright, so the purpose of the plan is to essentially establish policy priorities. So what are the priorities of the community in terms of policies that they wanna see, changes they wanna see? And so then it gets a little more refined in setting the work priorities. This is similar to the strategic planning process. How are we going to achieve those goals and policy directions that the community has provided us with? This could help the board with setting funding priorities for different sorts of improvements, such as a parks project, for example. Well, you can imagine, there's many things that this land use plan could help support in terms of supporting growth in certain areas of the county. And then we get kind of around full circle to assessing the progress. So this is a cycle, right? So this is what we were, some refer to as the planning cycle. So we're never finished with it. We're always improving. We're always building on that vision. So once we get through to the fifth step, we then will kind of evaluate where we've been through the cycle and repeat the cycle to continue to grow as a county and refine this vision and see how we did through this process. So this is the public engagement numbers. So we did surveys and we had in-person meetings. And so between September and October of twenty four, we had around fourteen hundred surveys from across the county, from different folks. And then during that same period, we had ten public engagement meetings throughout the county, and there's another map that you'll see in a moment that shows those locations. We had around a hundred and seventy seven in-person attendees at those different meetings. So it's a really great turnout from the community there in person. The second community engagement window from April to June, we didn't see as far, as many survey responses, but that's typical when you have a survey go out for a plan. You'll typically see more engagement on the front end rather than continuous engagement throughout the process. And then in person, we still had a pretty significant amount, around a hundred and thirty, so a little bit less than the hundred and seventy seven, but still a fairly strong commitment from the community to stay engaged with those in-person meetings. And so at the last meeting back in October, the board had asked us to open that survey back up, so we did that for a three-week period. We promoted it continuously through the Pender County website, as well as different social media platforms that the county is on. We were able to get thirty-five additional responses, and those responses were aligned with the responses from those previous folks that did the survey. So essentially, the additional sample was representative of the larger group that we had heard from. And so these are those ten community engagement areas. So we went to Maple Hill, Pender Lee. We went out to Burgaw, Rocky Point, the Curry area, Hampstead, Scottsdale, and as well as Surf City. Because we wanted to get out to those voices and get out to those communities, cause this plan has a large impact on people countywide. We wanted to make sure we were getting them involved. And then the second round of community engagement meetings, we did five. Those are the ones shown in green. Not as many as the ten, but still fairly representative from the different parts of the county. And so this is the draft that's before you this evening, and we'll talk a little bit about its framework. And so it starts out with the vision themes for the county. So what is the vision of the county residents? This is the highest level of the planned framework, and then it kind of goes downwards into this funnel from goals to policies to actions. So the visions help us establish the goals, right? What are, what goals can we pursue to achieve those visions? And then the policies will take that and say, what policies can we recommend or put in place to get us closer to those goals and therefore closer to the visions? And the actions are even more specific implementation items that will help us continue to work through this process and through this cycle. And so there were three main themes that came from this project. The first was coordinate growth, preservation, conservation, and infrastructure. The second was to support Pender County's fiscal health, and the third is to maintain a high quality of life. So a very well-rounded vision that the community has. I think each of these is going to speak to, to everyone here this evening as, as far as things that you wanna see within the community. I think these are all things that are highly valued in this community. And so we talk a little bit about the vision themes further, and so we have more detail here. So the idea of this theme is to coordinate and support a balance of new residential and non-residential development in strategic growth areas, protect rural character and agricultural businesses outside of growth areas, and conserve sensitive and important natural areas. Support the provision of public infrastructure such as roads, schools, parks, water, and wastewater to adequately serve development in identified growth areas while also addressing community needs related to health services, emergency services, and law enforcement. And then we have the next vision theme, which is support Pender County's fiscal health. Secure a more fiscally sustainable future that reduces the tax burden of homeowners by leveraging the county's geographic position in the region to create new opportunities for development and expansion of businesses and jobs in Pender County. And then the next, but certainly not least, is maintain a high quality of life. Provide a high quality of life for residents and workers by proactively planning for public services and facilities such as green space, parks, historical, cultural, and recreational assets that keep pace with the community's growth and development and efficiently leverage existing infrastructure and public resources. And so these are goals that were established for the plan before you, that again, they continue working towards those action items from those visions. So we have the first goal, sustainable and managed growth. The second, plan public facilities and services. Three, expanded economic opportunities. Four, attainable housing choices. Five, support agriculture and working lands. Six, safe and efficient transportation. Seven, environmental conservation and resilience. Eight, community unity and civic engagement. And nine, enhanced quality of life and community health. And so with those goals, we established thirty-one policies. So we broke those visions into different sections, and we essentially have the actions and the policies that will essentially take us that much further towards reaching those goals and achieving those visions for the county. So there's a number of policies. These policies are going to help inform the board in their decision-making from years to come, right? So whenever it comes to a land use decision such as a text amendment or a rezoning, the county commissioners are required by law to consider this plan. And just to be clear, they don't have to follow this plan, but it is kind of a guide for them to consider that vision moving forward. It's not a regulatory document, but it is something that we should always keep in mind when making these decisions for land uses throughout the county, as well as infrastructure investments, to make sure that the way the county is investing is consistent with the way the county wants to grow. And so in addition, the actions, there's around a hundred and fourteen actions. These are specific steps that we can take throughout this process. Planning staff is actually also working on prioritizing these actions in terms of what things are achievable within the next one to two years, three to five years, five to ten years, so that we can start working on this implementation. And so this brings us to the map. And so a lot of folks here are likely familiar with zoning, but if they're not, what zoning does is essentially establishes rules and regulations and rights and privileges for a piece of land. It's based on a lot of things. It's based on the area of the county. It's based on what it's been historically. If it's historically been a business district, then it's likely going to have a commercial designation with it. And so what this map does, it looks a lot like a zoning map, but what this map does, it's referred to as a future land use map. And this map essentially identifies different types of places such as residential, neighborhood center, heavy commercial, industry and commerce, and identifies areas of the county that we wanna see those types of growth and that type of development. And so this has a lot to do with the needs of the county in terms of areas where we need to grow commercially. And a lot of it reflects the development patterns that have already taken place, such as in the Hampstead area or the Rocky Point area. But one thing that I really wanna point out, there's a couple points here that I wanna point out. So we all know that the growth of Wilmington and New Hanover County is inevitable, right? We're already seeing a huge surge of development in our own county, in the Hampstead area, in the southern part of the county, as well as, you know, in the Brunswick County area. That growth is gonna come up. That growth is gonna come into Hampstead, and it's gonna come into Rocky Point, and we're even gonna see some probably on the four twenty-one corridor over the next ten, fifteen years. And so one of the things we did with this plan was identify the N C two-ten boundary as essentially a growth boundary. So we want to acknowledge and support the need for additional medium-density residential development in the southern part of the county while preserving and protecting everything north of that boundary, which as you can see before you, the majority of the county is rural agricultural. We wanna preserve that as long as we possibly can. And this plan takes a big step in the direction of preserving what we love about the county in terms of that rural side, while also acknowledging opportunities for growth consistent with existing developments within the Hampstead area. And so within each of these categories, there's essentially prescriptions for different regulations that could apply in those areas, different considerations for different place types, types of development. So if, if staff received an application for a development within one of those categories, the idea is that if they're doing something consistent with that category, that's something staff would, would be supportive of. But it's not always that simple. So we certainly, that's one of the first things we wanna take into consideration. What does the future land use map say? What does that future land use plan say about this area? And so we'll go over briefly some changes from the future land use map. We had initially put this out into the community earlier this summer, and we had received a variety of feedback. So one of the first changes was to change the rural agricultural only designation from rural neighborhood and rural crossroads around Pender Lee. So we wanted to support some commercial growth in the center of Pender Lee, which hopefully everyone here has had a chance to visit. But we received some feedback this, that basically said that, you know, we wanna kind of keep it the way it is. And so we refined the plan and returned it back to the previous designation. The second was the expansion of rural neighborhood on the western side of Rocky Point. This was in alignment with the future infrastructure investments on the four twenty-one corridor, consisted with the expected growth projection. This will also be related to the growing commerce and industry businesses that we're seeing on the four twenty-one corridor in the south. We're certainly gonna need to provide some housing on that side of the county for folks that are working there. And then the third, inclusion of residential neighborhood along four twenty-one near industry and commerce designation. Again, that's, this speaks to that same thing. We, we want people to come and work in the county. We also want them to live in the county and spend their money in the county, because when we have folks that have jobs here, they're taking that hard-earned paycheck across the county line with them when they go. We want people, people to be able to live, work, and play here and continue to invest in our county. And zoning is a way to achieve this, and this plan is a way to achieve that. So the fourth is expansion of rural neighborhood of Shaw Highway. So this was updated with, for consistency across existing conditions in the future land use map, and based on feedback we received from the planning board in May of twenty twenty-five. And then five, expansion of the coastal neighborhood designation. This was intended to capture existing development pattern east of seventeen. The majority of land is developed over there in Hampstead, more encumbered with approved projects, and is unlikely to be redeveloped in the plan horizon. So this essentially let it just kind of lock in a lot of that existing growth in Hampstead. And then six, increase of neighborhood center along highway seventeen. This is to support more commercial and industrial development and help diversify the tax base. And so looking at an overview of the public hearing draft changes, we added an additional narrative and associated policy for Senate Bill three eighty-two. Just to remind the board, this was a provision that prohibited the local government to initiate downzoning of property without the consent of the property owner. So essentially, we couldn't add restrictions or take away rights without the consent of that property owner. Not that that's what we want to do, but that is effectively how zoning has been used as a tool to guide that growth. So it kind of limits our ability to guide the growth, but what it really leads to is the need for more compromise and collaboration with those property owners and the county leaders. And then there was another policy that was addressed related to package treatment plants that was changed from discouraging in all areas to discouraged unless it can be demonstrated that their use is consistent with the development pattern described on the future land use map. An expansion of centralized sewer is unlikely in the near future. And then general formatting changes, just like you see with any sort of plan. And so back on September third, the planning board voted unanimously to approve the plan, to support that approval by the commissioners. They unanimously endorsed the plan but had two, two changes as part of their motion. The first one is in chapter three, page thirty-seven of the Neighborhood Center Characteristics. They wanted to remove language that stated establishments requiring large surface parking in excess of twenty thousand square feet from discouraged uses in that section. So the idea here was to, well, initially the idea with the draft of the plan was to not have these quite, you know, this area consumed by these large, big box retailer stores, but to more so support those small locally-owned businesses that are gonna have essentially smaller parking lots and are more likely to be owned by the local community. And then the third one, chapter three, future land use, page thirty-nine, regional center characteristics. So under the parking section, adjust the second bullet to read, surface parking lots should be located to side and rear buildings and dispersed across the development and not clustered in one large lot. And so now it's before you for consideration, and essentially just to remind the board, and we'll, we'll revisit this later. But essentially, you can adopt the plan with no changes. You can adopt the plan with the changes that were requested by the planning board. You could adopt the plan with, with your own changes added, as well as the planning board changes, or you could adopt the plan with only your, you know, only changes that you are calling for. And so that concludes staff's presentation. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sir, is there any questions for Mr. Brantley? Be reminded of the board that we won't vote on this and bring this up until nine point three under approvals of resolutions. So is there any questions or discussion now?
Mr. Brantley, do you foresee this plan having a major impact on our current planning process such as our unified development ordinance, the U D O, and other areas? And if so, do we need to revise? Do your recommendations revise those documents moving forward to be inconsistent with this document?
Yes, sir. This, this plan, the idea is that we take this plan, it refreshes the vision, the direction that the planning department has, and we take that and update all of the planning documents that we have and, and bring them into more li, more in line with this new vision that the county has. So the idea is that we would adopt a new U D O within the next year or two.
And do you foresee, as all of that, that it has a big impact on misuse development as well as community walk-in, walkable developments moving forward? So we have more misuse, more availability for our misuse, existing planning structure?
So the idea here is that we're, we're establishing more desired outcomes for the community members and for the county, such as promoting those walkable communities and improvements to those existing areas of the county. I hope that answers your question.
It does, and that leads into my final question tonight, and I can follow up with you tomorrow in regards to other questions. But in green space, how much are we identifying? Did we get into a specific amount that each year that we want to make sure there's a priority that we set aside for green space? I think that's, we've seen that in New Hanover County and some neighboring counties, and I think that's very imperative with all the development that we have had in Pender County, that we do have, that we do protect and have green space.
That is one of the big components of this plan is to continue to enhance and consider changes to the code that would enhance those requirements moving forward. They have been outdated for many They have been outdated for many years. And so we want to continue to enhance those green spaces and require even that folks are providing better and enhanced amenities and are preserving more than the state is allowing them to destroy. And I don't mean to be insensitive when I say that, but effectively at the federal level, you can impact certain kinds of wetlands. We want to encourage and work with developers on preserving more land than they necessarily have to at the state and federal level to get better outcomes for Pender County.
Any other questions for Mr. Brantley? Mr. Brantley, I, I want to just commend you and your staff for working on, you've worked hard on this. I do know through some of the public meetings, you and staff and us on this board have taken into account citizens' concerns. And I think moving forward, when we start to rewrite and redo the UDO, which I understand is in the progress, I think it'll realign more with, with the comprehensive land use plan moving forward in the future. And I want to commend you for the work you've done.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We, we've got a great team here.
Any other questions, Mr. Brantley? Thank you so much. We'll see you at 9.30.
I believe there might have, I believe there might have been a sign up for the public hearing.
Is there a sign up for the public hearing in this matter, Mr. Thurman?
Yes, sir. We have one sign up. Kim Meyer.
Ms. Meyer, welcome.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name's Kim Meyer. I live at 102 Leslie Lane in Scottsdale. First of all, I want to thank, thank y'all or whoever it was, the planning department for putting me, putting me on the steering committee for the comprehensive land use plan. I did learn a lot and I know, I attended the meeting on October the 6th and I know there were a lot of questions from the commissioners concerning the plan and especially things around the polling and things of that nature. And I wanted to try to clear some of that up if possible. And I'm going to admit, the 170,000 put forth for bringing in Clarion as, to help us, guide us through this process. Originally, when you hear that number, that amount, it is staggering to think that we're putting out that kind of money when we do need deputies, we need EMS, we need several things within our own community. But I do think it was worthwhile. I do think it, it paid for itself. Clarion brought forth a lot of information that we may have not thought about. They bring expertise from other counties where we, we needed some help. We needed some maybe clarification or different ways that we could approach things. And they brought forth that information. So I do think it was, it was beneficial for us. And I think it was beneficial also because at that time, we really only had maybe three people within the planning department. And I believe Daniel Adams was fairly new to his role. So we didn't have the expertise to really get there. And I hope, I know I've been working with the new members of the planning department and try, understanding their background. And I think going forward, we do have that expertise now. But I would recommend maybe as we develop and as commissioners change too, consider that there should be a procedure on how we go about addressing the changes to the comprehensive use plan. And maybe your suggestions as far as what is the target amount that we should look at for, in surveys? And how do we get there? That would be very helpful, I think, to the planning department for the future. As far as polling, historically, we have been bad as far as outreach to the public and saying, provide your information in a survey. This go around in 2025 was 2.2% for the survey, 0.4% as we discussed for the in-house surveys or in-person surveys. However, in 2017, if you look at the statistics from the UDO, I'm sorry, not the UDO, but the comprehensive land use plan, that was about 2.6% in the survey responses and 0.29 in in-person participation. And if you go back to 210, the survey participation was 0.65%. And even with the WMPO in 2023, there was a Pender County bicycle and pedestrian plan and we only had a 0.88% response to that survey. And that survey was open from November the 21st of 2023 to March 9th, 2024. So I don't know if just leaving the survey open is really going to help bring up that number. I think some things or some suggestions that I would consider is for the commissioners to consider having quarterly town hall, town, town hall meetings with your residents and maybe communicating more with your communities and saying, are there social media ways that we can reach out? Or is there, or bring awareness of these types of surveys? Or, you know, target concerned citizens like me that stand up here all the time in front of you and have us reach out to our communities. I do work with my community. I work a lot with Scottsdale and I know a lot of the, the local people. So that's why so many people did come out to the barn at Popular Grove. Let's see. And one thing I will say as well, please look at that future land use survey. There's a big brown box around, right next to Scottsdale. And it's marked right now as a residential neighborhood. However, if, in the summary of the future land use map, changes, excuse me, number five indicated that everything to the east of 17 should be considered for coastal neighborhood. So why is that big brown block, which is residential neighborhood there? We have a lot of stormwater concerns, drainage issues, and of course, traffic concerns in Scottsdale. If we open that up to high density or mixed use residential, that could present some, some more issues for Scottsdale. And as far as infrastructure, I know that's come up a lot and that was also in this polling. I think that we need to consider having some kind of a committee or department within Pender County government that interfaces directly with NC DOT. Because as a citizen, it's very difficult to reach out to NC DOT and actually get some results. In that two mile stretch between Porter's Neck and Scottsdale, there's seven lights. One of my neighbors told me that he was third in line to turn right on the south side of the Scottsdale loop onto 17. He got the green light, his, his side of the traffic got the green light. He was T-boned by a truck coming down 17. And he was third in line. So it's, we need to drop the speed in that section from 55 down to 45. And I know that doesn't always help. But it, you know, if it saves one life, that's one life it saves. So consider it. Also Porter's Neck has that flashing light so that you know when the light's about to turn red. Why don't we have that at every single one of those lights? Again, we, we need to save some lives. We need to make sure our citizens are safe. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
All right. That will close the public hearing. Item 6.1, Commissioner Groves.
Yes. I asked Desmond Jordan to come up and all his team.
All right, Mr. Jordan, get him on, get him on up here. Get him on. Tell him don't be shy.
Desmond, he is the national champion of Team USA in Africa.
World, world, right. That's right. That's right.
Just didn't put the world in there. That's right. I'm going to ask Desmond to go to the podium and tell us a little bit about what he did.
Can everybody hear me? So back in May, I went nationals and was afforded the opportunity to participate on Team USA in Cape Town, South Africa. So I went to Cape Town, South Africa for IPF Worlds. I managed to win squat, bench and deadlift and was committed for best lifter and won overall total. So currently, right now, I am number one, ranked number one in the world in the masters division. So.
Mr. Desmond, for, for those at home, explain what you do in your profession.
So right now I'm a professional power lifter. So that requires for me to have a good squat, good bench, good deadlift. And the meat is decided by overall total. So best lift in each event combined makes my total.
That's a strong commitment to that, in your diet, in your regiment, in your training, everything. And you, we commend you for that. And thank you for representing Pender County across the globe. Thank you.
Thank you. And one, one other thing I want to thank, three groups of people while I'm up here. My immediate family, my hall squad family and my Pender County family. Because one of the driving forces for me every day is to put Pender County on the map, to let people understand that we are equal to or greater than anybody we come against. So that is a driving force. I just want to say that part.
Well, thank you so much.
Desmond, thank you. Mr. Jordan, before you leave, I want to say, I want to say before you leave, about four years ago, when I went on a journey to lose weight, I was about 398. And I was living at the beach. I used to go to Mr. Jordan every morning. And I would hear him say, after going through a catastrophic accident in his life, that I'm not going to allow that to stop me. I'm going to become not only a national, but a world champion. And I tell you tonight, we salute him in Pender County in a great way. And Desmond, I have to apologize. I didn't get by to give you a donation before your event, but I'm coming by before the end of this week. I really subparebrate you. And I want to ask you, because this is history that you've made for us. All of your family, all of your supporters are here tonight with you. But I would like for you to come back and we as a board to take a picture with you that our PR person can have and submit this in our permanent record for Pender County as well. And maybe it can go in our archives in our lobby area. Can we have that, please? Stand as a member of the board.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
And, and for anybody that wants to YouTube this, it's got a connection with extra tough boots. Mr. Desmond is sporting those tonight. And us in the fishing community, thank you for that because we use them all the time. Good for you, my friend. All right. It's always had, it's always good to have great news. Thanks to folks in Pender County. So item 6.2 from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners presentation. Mr. Kevin Leonard by Ms. Blue.
Yes, my name is strictly here to introduce Mr. Leonard with NC ACC. And thank him for being here. And he has a presentation he'd like to share with you.
Welcome, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. That's a pretty hard act to follow. All of a sudden, I feel like I need to go to the gym. I don't know about anybody else. Thank you all so much for having me here this evening. It's a, it's a privilege to be in, in Pender County. And my presence here tonight grew out of a conversation with your vice chairman. So you can either blame him later or, or thank him. I hope it's a thank you. I know I'm grateful to be here to give you an update on your association, give you a presentation on the value of your membership, tell you a little bit about all the things you may or may not know that your association does for you. There's a lot going on, on the legislative front. So we can take as much time as you wish to talk about any of those things or as little as you want to talk about those things. But I'm happy to, to, to answer any questions throughout the presentation. So please feel free to interrupt me as, as I move through it. Let me, let me start with a thank you to our county commissioners, to this, to this board. It's sometimes a thankless job, serving, serving. And we recognize that. I want to thank the folks out here who are showing up for your meeting tonight. That's a key part of what you're doing here. The association, I often say to groups that I get to talk with, that the county government is the front door to your democracy. Y'all are the practitioners of government. And I'll be delicate as I say this, but we all know that our federal government right now is shut down. And our state government has not passed a budget. Y'all are here. You're working all the time. You have to make things work. And that's why I say that you're the practitioners of government. This is where things happen. You have to make things happen. You have to show up. And I want to thank you for that because your association recognizes that. And your jobs are difficult. Public policy is difficult. It's complicated. And the aim of your association is to try to make that a little bit easier for you. We serve you as county commissioners. We serve your staff. And we try to make things a little bit easier if you've got complex problems you're facing or to ultimately know you're not alone. There's 587 county commissioners in the state of North Carolina in all 100 counties. I'll get into the land use issues in just a moment. But that conversation made me think about conversations, strategic planning that we've led with Johnston County. You're not alone. You're not the only county who's facing similar types of issues that you just heard about on growth. And I know you know that. But coming to our conferences, interacting with commissioners across the state will help you realize that you don't have to go it alone. So a little bit about your association, and a lot of this is for, for the public, but maybe refresher for the commissioners. Our association was started in 1908 in, in Craven County by a Craven County commissioner who basically came up with the idea of like, we, we're a lot better working on this together than we are apart, especially down at the legislative building in Raleigh and in Congress in Washington. And so we were born out of advocacy, but we're so much more than that now. Our vision statement is empowering 100 counties to work together, together for the betterment of one state. And we do that by supporting all of our counties by promoting the wellbeing of North Carolina counties through advocacy, education, research and member services. We've changed a lot in the 100 plus years that your organization has, has existed. I'm going to jump quickly to money because I know it's on the minds of all county commissioners across the state. We offer program services that help you save money. And so I wanted to make sure that you know about this so that you're enrolled in these programs. We have an EMS Medicaid program that helps you recoup dollars that you spend on EMS Medicaid trips. Over the course of the program since 2000, we've saved counties $750 million, 50 million just in last year. We have a debt set off program. Those are, those are debts that are owed to the county that have gone uncollected. And so we're collecting those on your behalf and putting that back into your coffers so you can spend it on services and also maybe keep your, your local taxes down as well. So that, that's up to you how you want to do it, but we're collecting that and working that for you. You may be aware that your association was instrumental in the opioid settlement several years ago now. But for the association and a committee, we called 555, which was five county commissioners, five county. five county attorneys, and five county managers across the state, we negotiated a deal with the Attorney General at the time to have 80% of those opioid settlement dollars go back into your county. And that's important because this is where things happen. We didn't want that money, we were told by our members, your colleagues across the state, that money did not need to sit in a fund to be a grant allocation formula, it needed to come directly to you so you could put that money to work as fast as possible to respond to the opioid epidemic. County advocacy, so this is probably what you know most of us, or, or when you think of your association, you think of county advocacy down on Jones Street. And I have a lot of notes on this one because there's a lot going on. And again, this is the place where if you want to talk, um, if you want to ask any questions, I'm, I'm ready to go as deep as you want, or, or as not. But let me start, uh, at the state level. Um, a lot of the things that you may, uh, hear about, about the association, um, on advocacy are kind of behind the scenes. There's a lot of stuff happening at the Legislative Building, and I'll, I'll put this nicely, there's a lot of great ideas that get shared at the General Assembly, and some of them have unintended consequences for our counties, unfunded mandates. So, we're working behind the scenes with members of the House and the Senate and the administration to try to make those good ideas better and to modify them in a way that they're not putting unintended consequences on your county here in Pender. The land use issue is ripe for this discussion. Uh, the Senate bill that I think it was Mr. Brantley quoted, I think it was 382, on the downzoning issue, that showed up in a bill, in a Helene bill in late, almost a year ago in December. And we've been working to try to get that extricated or changed, so that's not taking authority away from, from the county, so you can make judgments on your land, on your land use and your zoning. It's gotten wrapped up in, in legislation that's, um, centered on affordable housing, and it's become a major issue in the state of North Carolina, where there were individuals at the General Assembly that wanted to delete authority by counties to do what you just did in talking about land use. So you are in, in control of how your county looks and feels. They were trying to apply a uniform land use policy to all 100 counties, and I'm here to tell you, if you've been to one county, you've been to one county, right? So, what's good for Pender is not good for Buncombe. What's good, what's good for Polk is not good for Camden. And so we advocate on your behalf that that needs to rest with you to make those decisions here in, in, uh, Pender County. We are, a, a hot topic for us also this session is solar farms, uh, and, uh, what's happening with solar farms? I know that that's an issue, uh, down this way a lot. And property tax exemptions. Early on in the session, uh, I noticed a trend that I hadn't seen before at the General Assembly, the number of property tax exclusion or exemption bills was like I'd never seen them before. And I, we, as your association, issued a letter to the General Assembly saying, hey, if you want to have property tax exemptions for certain individuals or classes of folks, that's great, but you need to send along the money to the county to fill the hole that you're creating, which is an unfunded mandate. And I got a lot of criticism, uh, for that, but that's the right thing to do because that's your funding, that they're using in Raleigh to give an exemption to a certain group of folks, and it makes us appear like we don't like that certain group of folk or whoever it is, and that's not the case. It all has to do about where the funding is coming from to give that exemption. And if y'all want to do that, that's your opinion, that's your decision, and that should, again, rest with, with you. I'll, um, I could go into a, a lot of other things here, just a couple of other highlights. School funding is a really major issue for school construction, uh, and the lottery funds, we've protected that, we've increased, we've lobbied to increase that for y'all so you can have funding for not only new construction but for renovations as well. On the federal level, right now, um, I would highlight HR1, which has passed, but it's going to really impact your DSS offices, because it's going to require within a year in, in, starting in '27, uh, determinations, redeterminations in eligibility that's going to increase your workload in, in the DSS department. So preparing for that is what you really need to be thinking about in your next budget cycle. And we're still advocating at Congress to tell them about that, to get either a delay or some changes to that, or increased funding for, for those types of, of things. And then FEMA, uh, I was in, uh, I've been in Washington quite a bit here lately on Hurricane Helene, and if you want to get involved on FEMA reform, now is the time. And we've been really advocating hard about, and we, with, with the issues related to Hurricane Helene, because the reimbursements have slowed significantly for the western counties. Why is that important to Pender? Well, there's a bill that's sitting in the US House on FEMA reform. And they're taking that under consideration now. I advocate to members of the general, of the, of Congress, and I'll advocate to you that we need to get this right. We've got to work on this together, this is an all-county issue, because y'all know it better than anybody, but the next storm is most likely to hit here than in the mountains of North Carolina, and we don't want FEMA broken like it is right now, and so we've got to work together. So in, at the Ledge Conference in, at NACO coming up in February, there's going to be a strong push on that FEMA bill, and we'll keep you updated on that, but your voice is going to be critical to letting folks know that they need that fixed now, because right now, you don't want to go through what they're going through out west or in other parts of, of the country. So we're working on that as well. Events and conferences, we just had one in Pitt County, uh, in August, um, and, uh, our next one's in Durham, but in between, we have district meetings, and I've seen some of you at our district meetings and, and at conferences, and we really appreciate. It's a great opportunity to really reinforce that you are not alone, that it's a, an opportunity to talk with other county commissioners across the state of North Carolina. And we also partner with the School of Government to offer training classes, uh, for boards of commissions as a whole, individuals, for your staff, the managers, um, finance officers, tax office, et cetera. We have a lot of data, uh, in front of you is our 2025 map book, I put that, uh, on your desk there. Hope you can, uh, uh, take advantage of that data, it's a great tool to use, uh, to compare Pender with other counties and surrounding areas. County Budget Tax Survey, I was reminded, I'd love to ask Pender to turn their information in on the Budget and Tax Survey, thumbs up there. Uh, that information's gathered so we can share that on trends across the state as well as use it at the General Assembly and in Congress, so, uh, we appreciate that. Um, we have a production company that does, uh, documentaries, we've done four now, food insecurity, veterans, the importance of the Veterans Service Office, um, and generations. We've got so many generations in our county workforce, and how do we work with those generations and build a pipeline of the new people who need to come up to serve in public service? And the last one was Hurricane Helene. Uh, I was in Dare County this morning, as I may have mentioned, and we're looking at coastal fisheries, because I know that's a big issue down here, and, uh, we're talking about that. So, we hope you've signed up for all of our emails, uh, and our, um, we have a risk pool, uh, with property liability, uh, and, uh, workers comp, opioid technical assistance. If you need assistance, uh, on how to build programs, we've got a, a whole team dedicated, uh, to doing that, financial technical assistance, doing assessments in your tax office or your CFO's office, et cetera. And now we've started emergency response, uh, technical assistance. We were given funding by the General Assembly to, to do that. I've already mentioned this, I'd love for you to get involved, because you, you don't have anything else going on, right? Y'all are just not busy at all. Um, so we'd love for you to volunteer, uh, on a, a steering committee, it's a great way to get more educated or involved, uh, with your association, and we have meetings on a quarterly basis with statewide leaders on big issues that we've, we're discussing. And I think that's about all, there's a whole list of resources, the PowerPoint, I believe, has been provided to you, and, uh, you can hit those links. Don't hesitate to call me, I think my information's on there, if it's not, uh, I'll get it to you, uh, you should have my cell phone number in there, you can call or text me anytime. We're available to do whatever you need, we are here for you, uh, and look forward to being, uh, that, uh, being your association partner. Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here with you, and I'm happy to take any questions or comments, or.
Mr. Leonard, um, thank you so much for taking some time out of your schedule to come down and to update us, along with the citizens of Pender County. Thank you a lot.
It's my pleasure.
That means a lot to us. Is there any questions of Mr. Leonard on the board?
I want to thank Kevin, um, your group, um, um, I've got to know you probably about 10, 12 years ago, when there was, um, folks like Bill Sue and, uh, Commissioner Green from across the county and other folk. And I remember when your predecessor left, the association was very concerned many times what the leadership, and you've been just stellar in your leadership, and we've seen that with you enjoying your team, we get all of your mellors this year, and we keep up what y'all are doing. I'm particularly very thankful for what you all are doing with your background checks, um, and really being a big advocate for that this year, uh, for folks who are working with children. Also, we're very thankful for what you're doing with tax exemptions for the solar farms, and 80% is a big number, could have a very impact on us. And reading that some weeks ago, I was just moved when you all were able to, uh, deliver and to really make that message very strong in the General Assembly, as well as what you're doing with EPA regulations, we can thank you for that too.
Great.
How do you think your success rate is going to be with those, uh, this year in those three areas?
Thanks for the question, and I appreciate, um, those comments. Uh, I'm, I'm hopeful on, on solar tax. Uh, the bill has progressed in the House, it's gotten caught up with all of the drama that is at the General Assembly at the moment, but when things break loose there, I feel like we're in a really good position. Um, we've had conversations with the Senate Leader, uh, specifically on that subject matter, and I feel like we're poised to, uh, have a good compromise on that piece of legislation, so I'm feeling good about that. I'm trying to think of the other couple of items that you were talking about, solar hit me, because I was hearing them. Oh, the background checks. We, we had some progress this, in this last session, uh, on background checks. And Joy Hicks, who's our Director of Advocacy and Policy, had some really key conversations, not only with members of the Assembly, but with, uh, the Department of Public Safety, making them aware and trying to get some, uh, extensions on the deadlines for those in a narrowed, uh, provision tailored, so it's just on foster care, individuals who are working in your DSS department on foster care, and a limited scope of who that is, because the way it was written, and I don't, I just think it was, um, I don't think it was understood, the ramifications of how that provision was written, and that it broadened it out to anyone who might be working with youth. So getting that tailored, uh, for the foster care situation, uh, was a, is, uh, is a success, and we, we are also looking at requesting additional funding for the Department of, uh, Public Safety for that, because the volume of, of background checks is going to increase significantly.
Please continue, and I'm only one commissioner, but I think we all were unified in this, is to share the message that unfunded mandates is having a big effect on us. Um, I've heard that 15 years ago, and we still see it today, it impacts our budget. When I got to be a commissioner some time ago, I thought I had a lot, we had a lot of control over a lot of things, and I found out it was very diminutive. Uh, we have very little control when it comes to a lot of, when especially with unfunded mandates, but it impacts our budget tremendously, and in a growing coastal county, that can have a big impact on us. Can you please share that message with the General Assembly, again, strongly, that it's devastating to counties like Pender?
Absolutely, I will. I think that's, that's the biggest thing we face, is the educational process of educating members of the House and the Senate about what is intended to be a good solution, but the unintended consequences, they're the things that we're constantly battling in the General Assembly of like, did you know that that's going to cause this, uh, unintended ramification? So yes, sir, we'll absolutely do that. Happy to do so. Commissioner Tate.
Any other questions for Mr. Leonard? If not, we'll let him get back toward, toward Raleigh. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate your, your, uh, your public service and all that you do for the people of Pender County. Thanks, sir. Thank you, take care. Thank you.
All right. Item 6.3, Consumer Horticultural Program Update for Mr. Sykes. I see that Mr. Sykes is not here.
Good evening, everyone.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
I have a PowerPoint presentation. Thank you. My name is Tiffany Boone, I am the Horticulture and Local Foods Agent for Pender County Cooperative Extension, and I appreciate you allowing me to give program updates, um, tonight. So I am responsible for all the gardening, uh, questions and lawn questions for Pender County, as well as the Master Gardener Volunteer Program, so I wanted to focus on that tonight. It is not just a gardening course, it is about volunteerism. So we focus on gardening education, um, training those volunteers to help them to reach the extension of our local staff. Um, we have 94 Extension Master Gardener Volunteers in Pender County, and last year, those volunteers and I reached over 251,000 contacts, uh, that is through meetings, Facebook, websites, festivals, all kinds of different venues. Uh, we had 6,486 volunteer hours, and when you use the federal, um, volunteer number of $34.79 an hour, that is valued at over $225,000. So our volunteers do a lot for Pender County. What we do is give people research-based, non-biased information, we're not trying to sell them anything, we're just helping them out with the facts so that they can make, um, educated decisions on management. Uh, we help people, businesses, communities, we help them to troubleshoot and solve problems, develop leadership skills, and build a better future. Um, every year, we have an intern training, um, in 2026, uh, we have that class every Wednesday from nine o'clock until noon, and we go for 17 classes. We have lectures, a lot of hands-on activities, and we have some field trips. We have a Speakers Bureau, um, component to master gardeners that go out into the community and give educational topics at different, um, festivals and meetings, um, a lot of them are at the library, and we give all of these different educational topics. We have an Ask a Master Gardener booth at most of our festivals, including the Urban Garden Fair, our different plant sales, farmers markets, and our native plant festival. We have a huge school outreach program where we go into the Pender County schools and we teach first and third graders about gardening topics, it's all hands-on things, it's one hour every month, and 25 of my volunteers have been working on that, we've been adding some new classes this year. Uh, last year, we added a class for students with special needs, so it's a lot of, um, specific sensory and tactile, different hands-on classes, uh, and we have a special partnership with the Turtle Hospital, so they donate lettuce seeds to our classrooms on the eastern part of the county, and those kids grow lettuce, and then they donate that lettuce back to the Turtle Hospital, and they take a video of the turtles eating the lettuce, and the kids are able to see that, so it goes full circle. We also have four demonstration gardens throughout the county, our big one is at our Extension Office, which is two, uh, buildings over. Uh, we have one at Poplar Grove Plantation, it is, uh, herb and garden, um, teaching demonstration garden. We have a small garden at the Burgal Library, and we have one at the Hampstead Library. Uh, we are getting a new garden, they're saving space for us whenever they build the new Hampstead Library. Uh, we have plant sales, we have a spring one coming up in April at our Extension Office, and we have a fall plant sale every year at the Hampstead Methodist Church, it's in October. We also have a poinsettia sale, uh, as part of our fundraising. We do a lot of different activities, one, um, is a scholarship for kids, um, interested in horticulture that are going to, uh, universities. We have educational and field trips, um, some of our field trips are local, some are international, so our volunteers have an opportunity to go to England, Costa Rica, different areas. Uh, we also have a big Making of the Greens, um, activity every year where master gardeners collect green leaves from their yards, and we get together and make arrangements. Uh, we made over 300 last year that go into nursing homes and hospitals, um, for people that are not able to get out for the holidays. And we have a lot of special product, projects, um, going on, um, all the time. We helped the, um, Surf City. We helped the, um, Surf City, um, Board to come up with a native plant, um, project that goes around the roundabout, and we helped them to plant it. And we taught their crew, um, everything that they needed to know in order to take care of it. We also take care of the muscadine, um, demonstration in Johnson Park downtown. So we prune that every year as well as fertilize it. I encourage you to check out our Facebook page. We have a lot of educational, um, publications on there. We also have a Master Gardener Facebook page that you can follow, as well as an Extension page. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much. Any questions? Thank you so much for the update.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Item six point four, Ms. Fulton, Citizens Leadership Academy Presentation.
Good evening. I just wanted to very briefly discuss our first-ever Citizens Leadership Academy that we've had this year. We just finished up in October. So the purpose of the Leadership Academy, it's, we kind of started talking about it the end of last year, was to increase the knowledge of citizens, empower community participation, and promote open communication. Um, there weren't any, you know, high eligibility qualifications. It was just you had to live in Pender County. You had to be over eighteen. We did not charge a fee. Uh, some chambers of commerce in other counties charge fees, but we did not charge one for ours. So in the spring, uh, we covered parks and rec because, you know, it's spring. We're all getting out and about. Uh, we talked about all of our parks. We happened to meet over on the east side. So we looked at Abbey Nature and also Kiwanis Park, which was under construction at the time. We also talked about North Carolina Forestry Cooperative Extension, who just presented, um, also talked to our group in April. We saw the sea turtle rescue as well, because who doesn't want to go see the sea turtle rescue? Uh, then we kind of turned to the Sheriff's Office and Judicial System in May. We heard from our sheriff. We heard from, uh, Judge Corpening, our District Attorney, uh, Smith. And we also, we tried to take a tour of our new Law Enforcement Center site that was under construction. It was very rainy that day, so we didn't get to quite walk around everything, uh, but the group enjoyed it anyway. June, we heard from Emergency Management, our Fire Marshal's Office, Pender E. M. S. and Fire over in the E. O. C. Um, and in true Tommy fashion, it was storming that day, and so we had to call it a day a little bit early and come back inside, so we couldn't see all of the equipment. But we did get to actually see the generator, uh, in play on our Emergency Management Day, so it worked out. In the summer, uh, it was a little too hot to be doing field trips, so we stuck with talking about the schools. We met with, uh, Pender County Schools, Cape Fear Community College. Our group really enjoyed listening to Dr. Bree Love, um, and Mr. Morton as well. And in August, um, I failed at taking pictures in August, so we don't have pictures from the water treatment plant. But we heard from Planning and Community Development. Uh, Justin, who gave a presentation earlier, did a fantastic job talking about zoning and planning. Then we took a tour of our, uh, water treatment plant. We heard from Director Cologne, um, as well as James Proctor. And our group really loved learning all of the things from the different departments. So we wrapped up, uh, in September. We heard from Novant with, uh, Miss Ruth Glazier. We also heard from our Health Department. We got to take a, a full tour of our new, uh, Health and Human Services building. It's amazing how much that has changed just in the last two months. Um, and then last month, we wrapped up with our municipalities. We heard from Burgal and Surf City. Um, I talked about the strategic plan. We had Jacob Orman talk about our budget process, which was a request from our group. Uh, we didn't really think anyone would want to hear about the budget process, but our group was very interested and requested it, so we added it there at the end. Um, and had a really great discussion about how all of these things work together and how we kind of prioritize things during the budget process. And then, of course, we heard from our Chair, Mr. Burton. Um, so overall, our group really, really enjoyed. We had twelve people. Um, our group really enjoyed the process. Uh, we hope to do it again in the future. We'll probably tweak the schedule a little bit. Uh, some things took longer than expected. Some things, uh, didn't take as long as expected. And of course, we'll have different projects going on and those types of things. Um, but we did have some feedback from some of our participants. I didn't include every single quote from all of our participants, or I'd be up here for thirty minutes, uh, reading emails from people. But, um, our group was very appreciative of the experience. They talked about how much they learned about the county. Um, I will say that Brandy Cobb, our Communications Director, and I, uh, really enjoyed it. It was a lot of work to keep it going, uh, this year. But we really did enjoy getting to have that one-on-one communication with our citizens group and learn more about what people are doing in their community. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I just wanted to give a very brief overview now that we finished our first Citizens Leadership Academy.
Any questions for Ms. Fulton? Um, I just have a statement, Ms. Fulton, just, um, from my perspective. Having been involved with Citizens Academies in my former career for about, at about twenty years ago, I think this is a great opportunity for our citizens to be engaged and learn in what their county government does for them. And to those, all, all the citizens that are either in our audience or watching tonight, please, if you want to be involved, um, get involved and attend the Citizens Academy. Understand what your taxpayer dollars do. You'll be visiting all the aspects of the county that you pay for. Um, and I think a lot of our citizens that leave that become advocates for county, for the government, and for these citizens, or for the, for the employees that are, that are our citizens also, that, uh, help provide the essential services that they need. Um, great, great job in putting this on for you and Ms. Cobb and everybody that done this, Ms. Blue. Um, and I hope that there's many more full academies that you'll have. Any other questions? Thanks, Ms. Fulton. Appreciate you. All right. I see you're still standing there.
Still here.
So, item six point five is going to be you. The N.C. Fire Chief Consulting Presentation.
Yes. The Board requested to hear from North Carolina Fire Chief Consulting, who's our consultant for the merger. Uh, so I have Chief Greg Grayson here. Um, so he'll be giving the presentation. Um, and I'll just be standing back here if y'all have any questions for me.
Thank you so much. Chief Grayson, good to see you again.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for allowing me to join you here today and, uh, echo what you heard earlier. Thank you for the service you're providing the people of Pender County. So it's certainly been our, uh, pleasure to work with your staff, uh, people from, uh, Pender EMS and Fire, as well as Pender Lee. And I've been asked to give an overview on where we are with that process here tonight. And I'll go through that with you and glad, again, to answer any questions that you might have. We work with, uh, local governments exclusively, uh, throughout North Carolina. Uh, we help municipalities in all of our counties a- as well, and we have worked with a number of, of merger situations. Unfortunately, there's a lot of challenges and dynamics happening in the fire service, that that's, uh, pretty prevalent throughout North Carolina today. So we have, uh, worked with a number of, uh, of jurisdictions in doing that. Mr. Leonard is here from the Association of County Commissioners tonight. I'm glad to see him here. We do contract with the Association of County Commissioners to provide technical assistance to all one hundred counties and have helped a number of counties along the way. We've also, uh, had for a number of years have, uh, worked with the League of Municipalities as well. And so we really try to, to assist whatever a local government needs, uh, in North Carolina related to fire and rescue services. When we're working with you and your team, uh, we're, we're independent. So, uh, we have a, a strong team of folks. I'm a retired fire chief, uh, from Greensboro. We have retired chiefs from across the state. We have folks in all geographical areas. And, uh, when we look at these, we look at that, what's the data say? What's the information say? What's the best practices say? We're, we're simply looking at, at this and trying to help move things forward to help protect and serve the people of Pender County. So our, our role in this is very independent, uh, and in all of those pieces that we, we assist with. Uh, I'll speak to you a little bit about your team that has been working diligently. Uh, we call this the Transition Team, as we're working towards a, uh, July one, twenty twenty-six, uh, merger date uh, with Pender County, Pender EMS and Fire, and also Pender Lee. With the decisions that you have made during the, the recent months, we've been working recently here with that, those three, uh, entities. The, uh, folks serving on the Transition Committee are, are listed here on the right. And then, uh, we have held, held to this point eight sessions. We have another one this Thursday. So, uh, the group really is working well. Uh, folks are, are communicating well. Uh, we have lots of wheels in motion, so to speak, with the group. And, uh, we have had a number of these on-site, actually here in this room. Uh, we do some virtually as well. Uh, one of my team members, uh, has been involved in the, all of those pieces. And then we reach out, for example, one of my team members, uh, retired O. E. M. S. Director. So put, we pull that expertise in as needed, or G. I. S. Uh, and then we're, we're working with some of the, uh, salary pieces. That includes some of the, uh, work with your H. R. Staff, as well as some of our staff as well. So we've been working, uh, very well with this group and, uh, you know, good representation from all of the, the entities. When we were asked to come in and assist to help facilitate this process, we, we weren't starting at zero. Your, your staff had done a really credible job of putting together a, a template and a plan to move, uh, this initiative forward. So when we came into this, you had, you'd done a lot of really good work. Uh, and, and we were very, very pleased to be able to, to build upon that. So I think we really took what you had, had done, what you had done in decision-making, what your staff had, uh, accomplished, your manager, Ms. Fulton, uh, other members of your staff, and been able to build upon that. And as, as you know, as you have continued to, to evolve this process here, and even in recent months, it continues to build and evolve, working towards that July one, twenty twenty-six date. The team thus far has made several accomplishments. I'll highlight just a couple of those. You're familiar with these, but for purposes of, of your attendees. Uh, the first piece is a memorandum of understanding. That, that's essential. Every merger that we have worked with, what are the big issues? What are the key things that are important to each entity? And that becomes a guiding, uh, document for us moving forward to, to a final agreement that, that the attorneys help with. But tho- that M. O. U. really is, is essential, uh, for good communication and be able to lay out the things that are most important. Really, with each step, we also provide some communication, uh, suggestions back to your manager and also, for example, Chief Haraway with, uh, Pender EMS and Fire to help keep the, the personnel informed about each of these key steps. But the M. O. U., uh, is in place, and, uh, folks have worked very, very diligently on that. And so, uh, that is a, a success. Also, that team has developed this, this really intricate set of, uh, tasks. We always look at tasks, but, you know, we come to the table with, here's what others have done. Let's look at these. But that's not what Penders needs to look like. Penders needs to look like Penders. And so as we have, have, uh, put that together, we actually have sixteen topic areas for you. And I'll just give a quick example of what that looks like. This is just a excerpt of the Human Resources and excerpt of Fire Operations, just to give you a, a sense of what that looks like. But we have sixteen of these, and we start tracking, this is a need, this is a challenge, this is something that needs to be addressed. Uh, some of those have been completed, and, and items are on file and in place. Others are in motion. Others we're still working on. So each, each month, when we come together, we go through what's the progress, what's the challenges, what's the hurdles? How can we get this continuing to move forward? So our role is to, to help question, uh, challenge, and assist. Uh, some of these may be, okay, we need to go get this person. For example, this week, uh, we're bringing someone from the Office of State Fire Marshal in to help answer technical questions and, and resolve any of those issues that were there. So we, we bring people in as needed and, and help facilitate that, again, keeping it to move forward. But those are your topic areas, and those are just some examples of what we're working on. As we look forward into some next steps, we wanted to touch on, on a piece that is very important to this because, uh, even though we're here in November, it'll soon be budget time. And so one of the, the key pieces to this process is looking at each employee and how they're affected by this change. It's really the only way we, we know how to produce a credible, um, projection, cost projection. And so depending upon, for example, what a, uh, an employee chooses for their health insurance or what they may, may elect as benefits, there's costs associated with that. So we are stepping through that process now. And again, this is just a, a small, you know, visual of that. It's much bigger. You can see all the tabs at the bottom. It's, it's quite complex. But we've done this on every merger, and it's, it's proved to be very helpful. Uh, it's helpful for the employees to know this is what I look like, uh, for example, with Pender EMS and Fire. Here's what I look like with Pender County. That's important. That, each person wants to know that. It's important for you as policymakers and decision-makers to also know, well, what's the cost of that? And so we're in this process right now and, uh, working through this as we work towards, uh, budget preparation moving forward. Then, one of the next steps is for legal counsel, uh, both, uh, with, um, Pender County, P- um, Pender EMS and Fire, and Pender Lee, to, uh, look at, at the documents that we're working on, make sure that we're on track. We don't want to be moving forward if, if one of them says, I need X, and it's not there. Uh, we're familiar with what the Department of Justice needs, uh, and, you know, those type things that we work through. But we, we look to each legal counsel, and we have this schedule for the first week in December right now. So that's one of the pieces that's, that's coming, uh, forward, and we're, we're on track with that also. And as I mentioned, the budget piece. So there are lots of budget pieces, the, the biggest of which and the most important of which, we think is the personnel. And, uh, that we've been putting attention to that and will continue to. But there's operating budget issues as well, and we're working through that. And so the group is engaged. They're involved. Um, they've been working on completing tasks between each of the meetings that we have. And many of these either feed into the financial and the budget piece, or they'll feed into the, uh, definitive agreement at the end of the process. So we're going to complete all of those tasks. Um, there may be some. There's typically a, a handful that are post-merger that can't be accomplished for whatever reason. But, uh, we follow up with that as well. So if we were here next, um, you know, next November, there may be something that, that's, that's lingering. We make sure all those are completed as well. So we're working on completing everything that's possible. Uh, certainly before the, the date, many are, are necessitate, necessities for the agreement. But, uh, there may be some that follow up, and we track and, and, um, you know, look at each of those as well. That definitive agreement, uh, typically is done very close to the, uh, date. Uh, and again, the attorneys and legal staff will be looking at that. I guess give an example, one that we did this past July. Uh, but, you know, those, that's the piece that's binding. You have concurred with the M. O. U. That's non-binding. The definitive agreement is binding. And so that's the process that, that local governments follow in North Carolina to, to move through this, um, process. For you as elected officials, some next steps that we would note to you is just continue to support the, uh, Transition Team's work. You know, these folks are working with the, week, week to week, and we're, we're, uh, coming, reminding them of pieces and processes, month to month. Uh, we take, uh, notes of each meeting. We send those forward. We, we're tracking that task list as an example. And then just challenges that come up. We're looking to, to try to help support. We ask you to support that team's work as they move forward as well. And, uh, your manager, Ms. Fulton, they're going to be working to keep you informed. Uh, this is where we are. This is the, the next, uh, piece of this. This is the challenge that we're, we're addressing. So, uh, just support your Transition Team and ask the questions and have your staff continue to keep you informed moving forward. And with that, I'll be glad to take any questions that you might have, uh, tonight about the, uh, the team, the facilitation work that we're doing, or any, uh, concerns you might have.
Any questions for Chief Grayson?
I just want to thank you for coming tonight. Um, we've been needing to hear from you directly. I've been keeping up behind the scenes, but to hear from you and for the other citizens to hear is wonderful. And looking forward to hear you again.
Thank you, sir. It's a good process. It's been going in a positive direction.
I appreciate you coming, um, and, and giving a, an update, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Um, it's, uh, like you say, it's a, it's a kind of a time-consuming, grueling process. But I think at the end of the day, I've always been saying this, it's going to be a great thing for the citizens of Pender County and for the employees of Fire and EMS. Um, I'm very familiar with some of your consultants. I've worked for some of them. And, um, I think you're nothing but a top-notch organization, and you work for the citizens and the employees.
Very much so.
So I appreciate you coming tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Item six point six, Presentation Regarding the Process for Development Moratoriums. Mr. Thurman, the County Attorney. Get to go to the podium, sir. That's good. All right, Mr. Thurman.
Let's see how well I do. Is it going to be a different question? Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, uh, you and the Board requested that I provide a summary about possible moratorium, uh, to address the growth in Pender County. And, uh, the good news is, the law that the General Assembly has passed regarding moratoria is set forth in a single statute, uh, one sixty-D, one oh-seven. Uh, and it is not that long a statute, but it, s- it, it expressly gives authority to adopt a moratoria for local government, cities- it expressly gives authority to adopt a moratorium for local government, cities and counties. It also lays out in quite a bit of detail, the procedures that have to be followed. And I'll go into those as I go through this. The caveat to that for a lot of the problems that we're facing is that, and I'll have the quote on the next slide, we can't adopt a moratorium to address residential issues as resident, for the purpose of addressing residential issues. For instance, the only moratorium that's been adopted since one sixty D was in place that I have been able to find in, in consultation with the school of government, was the town of Belmont adopted a moratorium because they had a failing sewer pump station. And so, but that was the purpose. And it doesn't have anything applied to any large development. But it exempted, and there are other exemptions that'll go through. And so to address some of the issues we've got that, you know, it just, the moratorium is not really going to be that much of an option. And also something very crucial is that permit choice, which means if I've got a project in the works and the regulations change, I as the property owner have the ability to say, I want to go under your prior version of your ordinance, or I want to go under the new ordinance. Say the new ordinance allows for more mixed use. Or, you know, doing some, you getting some density benefits from, you know, advanced development techniques, you know, green type things, whatever they may be, that the, the local government decides. I could, I could go under the new one, but I get to decide as the landowner, which way I go. So that means if you would, if, if any project, it gets held up and then the moratorium ends, because these are all got to be temporary and we'll get into some of that a little later, is I still have the choice of going under the existing ordinance. So it's not a, you know, it's not going to fix everything. And put it on the, the first bullet point there and, and quote it, "A moratorium may not be adopted for the purpose of developing and adopting new or amended plans or development regulations governing residential uses." So that can't be the basis of a moratorium. Again, it has the sewer. And because you have to state what you're going to do, for instance, Belmont says they're going to hire an engineer. They're going to have a plan developed. They're going to acquire right of way and any easements they need. They're going to enter a contract for construction. They're going to do all that in thirty months. Well, for instance, with traffic and towns at some point may try to do something based on traffic because they own the streets. As this board knows, we don't own the roads. We don't have a single road that the county owns. Anything we own, the most it could be would be a driveway. So we can't take steps to, and again, part of the requirement is we have to outline what steps we're going to take. But we can't take steps to move the bypass ahead faster or to make other changes. Discussion, some issue, somebody dropping the speed limit. We don't have the ability to do that. That has to go to D O T. So again, the moratorium, we wouldn't be allowed to address on some of those. One, can't be to try to affect residential development. Two, there's nothing we're going to do that's going to change the traffic flow there. The, also there are a number of exceptions, exemptions in addition to just the, can't be to rec, change regulations on residential. It, they don't apply to any projects which already have received a building permit, which have not gotten approval, but submitted a complete special use permit application. If they have statutory or common law vested rights, i.e. they've spent money in the process and at some point, not completely clear in either the statute or the case law, they get vested rights, which means they can continue on as they are. And then if there has been a preliminary or a final plat, they're allowed to, that review continues on through the process. And then here are the statutes, spells out, again, the good news is it tells us what we've got to do. We must, you must identify the conditions and that you considered alternatives. Again, I don't want to keep talking about Belmont, but they talked about, they looked at trying to do a, an interlocal agreement to send their sewer somewhere else and determine that wasn't viable to proceed because there wasn't anybody that had capacity near enough to get to them. So you'd have to say what you looked at and why that didn't work. You have to identify, you know, which, you know, types of permits you are putting under the moratorium and that, and then how not doing that. For instance, you know, okay, you say if you're dealing with sewer, there would be an exemption. If somebody's handling all their wastewater on their site, then they could move ahead because they're not impacting, they're not continuing to overload that, that sewer pump station. You have to say when it's, how long it's going to last and why it's going to take reasonable. And it's got to be a reasonable time. Once again, not defined, but reasonable. And then you have to lay out a timeline and the steps, specific steps you are going to take to remedy the conditions. And so it, it goes there. And there is also, if the moratorium is going to be sixty days or less, you can do it with just seven days notice and proceed. I, you know, that doesn't seem a whole lot of time to do very much to address a problem. And if it's sixty one days or more, you have to have two advertise, put in two advertisements, have a public hearing, just like we do for a rezoning, basically. It's the same, it, it references and incorporates the same statute that deals with that. And if you decide at the end of that period, as you're getting close to it, we hadn't solved the problems, we need to extend it, you have to go through the same procedures and the same statements and explain why you didn't get to where you needed to get to, to get it done. And then, and I've tried to hit the highlights with some of this, but the, some of the special items that go, that, all right, they, the landowner that thinks, you know, the moratorium is unfair to them in some way, can go to court to seek an injunction. It is given priority and an expedited hearing. In other words, it's, it doesn't matter that there are ten cases in front of it. It goes to the top of the list when it, at the next available court session. The, and we bear the full burden of showing full compliance with the statute, which, I mean, we, it's, it sets that out, which kind of ups it a little bit, but you always do. And then again, the, let's go into the, the projects which have the applications before we schedule the public hearing, get to continue on. They get to keep moving ahead. And so it's not the, and it should be, it's called the call of the hearing, i.e. when we first give notice that we're going to hold the hearing, that's the cutoff date, not the hearing itself. And to go back to something that Mr. Brantley and, or Mr. Linder may have snuck out when he heard I was going to be talking. But the, the no down zoning bill, which got put in, as some of you may recall, it basically was a tat on to a hundred plus page bill. And it was about three sentences. It just says you can't have down zoning unless the property owner consents. So if you go through all the steps and do that as the law stands now, and again, it has not yet been applied to my knowledge, but, and everybody's hoping it may get some clarity on it. Because again, it is a, a big, big reduction in our ability. But so you could go through all that and then unless each owner that would be affected agrees to it, you can't downzone, which for instance, recruit, reduce the density, chain, limit, reduce uses. And so if that was something that was being looked at, it couldn't be done. And as I say, I tried to keep it relatively brief. I know that's a surprise to everybody. But if there's any questions you have, I'll be happy to try to address them. And also I have a few extra copies of the presentation that I printed out if members of the public would like to see that. I try to bring that because as I told our clerk, we're doing some of this, I bring hard copies because I'm old and that's what I'm used to. So I, you know, for other folks that might want to read it that way, I, you know, thought I, I would do that. And again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, if you have questions, I'll be happy to address them. And I'm not trying to, look, as a lawyer, you never want to tell your client, you can't do that. But there's an awful lot you can't do. And again, nothing because you don't want to, you literally, I mean, that, again, going back to the, the statement, I mean, it is in the first sentence of this bill, you can't enact a moratorium to address problems with residential uses.
Mr. Thurman, thank you for the, for the presentation. I appreciate you coming and laying it out, especially for the public who a lot of folks are unaware or have questions about, about development. So I got three takeaways from your presentation, which I've had those. The first being a moratorium cannot be adopted for the purposes of developing and adopting new or amended plans for development regulations governing residential uses.
Yes, sir.
And the second being a moratorium will not apply to projects which have building permits, special use permit application, statutory common law vested, vested rights or preliminary or final plants that are, plans that are already under review. And the third takeaway I get from this is we as this board are not all power in heaven and earth. Many of us agree with smart growth and development. I do. Common sense, smart growth and development. I would, I wish we could partner with developers and property owners to make their plans and developments more aligned with the community. And I advocate for that all the time and push for that. But at the end of the day, they're going to do what they can do by right with their attorneys and their, whatever they do. But I still push for better, have a nice trees and have a nice landscaping entrance and, you know, egress and, and I'll continue to do that. But I appreciate you coming tonight and, and doing this and, and giving that update to folks. Because there's some projects on the books that have been okay, that are underway and going and folks are upset about. And I totally agree. Some of which were before, a lot of us even up here had anything to do with it. But we're going to work through it and hopefully the developers will heed the public's comments and our concerns and maybe try to do some things that would partner with, with the public and making things better. But that was just my comments. Thank you, sir.
Any other question?
Mr. Thurman, what, what constitutes an emergency?
Well, and it's a imminent threat to public health or safety.
So what, public health or safety? If, if the fire marshal was here, I'm sure she would probably be willing to attest to this, but we have overcrowded schools. And we're trying to, we, when I served on a school board there, we advocated for a bigger school, right? But that doesn't take away what we have now presently. So would you, would you say, would you say this would be justified as an emergency?
We could certainly take that position. I can't tell you which way a court's going to rule because it has not been interpreted. And the issue being, if you're not, you've already got, you know, a lot of units, what, what would we do with the moratorium that would remedy the issue and how would stopping, you know, development help remedy that? Given the limits on what we can remedy. In other words, if the approved lots are going to be able to continue, which the consensus is that yes, they will, what is, what are we going to do with the moratorium? But yes, there are. And, and again, go back to it's for the purpose of residential. So if we're doing it for a health and safety issue, again, sewer, you know, again, if there is, you know, a fire issue, but I don't know that the fire marshal is going to say the school is unsafe. Because if that's the case, it's not about a moratorium, it's about the school needs, is going to have to change or be closed.
Would it not be deemed if a student don't, when I visit Surf City Elementary School and saw students sitting outside the classroom, if we don't do something, could they not rule that if we, it would affect the quality of education? If teachers have forty students in a classroom, it could impact student learning? Could we not take that argument? And also I hear your presentation counsel, but could we not address this issue with our General Assembly? If they made this rule, it seems like that's where this power lies that we need to hold our state legislators responsible and ask them how to address, alleviate this issue. Would you contend?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, the General Assembly could change it tomorrow if they wished. Now, the issue with the schools is also going to be, the solution to that is to build more schools.
But don't, and that would be my argument for a moratorium, because until we can build more schools, it takes two to three years. Or until we can build that school, then we stop the growth until we can catch up. We don't have anywhere to put our students.
And once again, I'm not saying that you can't look at that. You can't. I'm just saying that it's going to be an uphill battle, given the way that statute is written.
Mr. Thurman, if I can interject here.
Yes, sir.
You also mentioned safety. You and I discussed this previous, in the previous board meeting outside session. But we've mentioned law enforcement and because safety is, I think paramount to anything else right now, specifically for our citizens, would a, would that also fall under the purview of being able to, to get better safety measures in place?
And, and I, I'm not sure of safety with regards to?
Well, more law enforcement, more firefighters, potentially emergency management. We probably had, and I will speculate on this, six people displaced from the homes because of one fire. One, one house is totally lost, right? And the other two residents on both sides of them are depleted. As far as law enforcement goes, I'm not going to get into the devil in the details, but if you start on one, one side of the county and try to get to the other with traffic, depending on what time it is, there could be substantial damage to a person or their property. Because we don't have it. We don't have the coverage. The sheriff, the sheriff needs it.
Well, yes, sir. I mean, that can be looked at, but again, we have to say, what are we going to do to fix it? And what's the timeline to do that?
I, I would, I would advocate more than sixty days just because of the hours that it's going to take a person to get through the training. It's eight hundred plus hours to get through school. You can't do that in sixty days.
Oh, absolutely. No, I mean, to, to.
So you would, that being said, and you agreeing to it, would you be in favor of going before or typing up some type of moratorium for us to possibly present for approval?
I mean, if the board wants me to draft something up, I can draft something up, but I'm, I'm not going to paint, you know, an overly rosy picture. I mean, depending on what, are we stopping all development in the county?
I think that's a board decision. I can't answer just that.
No, but I'm just, I, again, I'd need some feedback, you know, what are we doing? Are we doing it?
I'll give you a little bit of feedback. Mr. Thurman, I think where a lot of it lies, and there was some brief discussion about that from Dr. Tate a minute ago. I, I wouldn't mind entertaining a resolution that you would draft for our support to look at this whole thing in the North Carolina legislature. I think we have a representative for Pender County for the seventy thousand, seventy one thousand folks in this county. And I think it lies at his feet. Representative Carson Smith. And I think we need to reach out to him. He needs to be our voice. He's elected in this county. He needs to be our voice in Raleigh. They make the laws. And I think it needs to be imperative on him. Maybe, maybe Representative Smith can come and give us an update on his thoughts and feelings and his mission, vision and values for what the growth of Pender County is about.
That, and obviously that's, between the board and, and Representative Smith on, you know, if you want to invite him, I mean, I could certainly, you know, look at working on, you know, a resolution.
Representative Smith is always invited to. Is always invited here to speak to the citizens that he serves any, any meeting we have. He's has an open invitation.
And, and again, I'll, whatever the board wants to do, but, you know, I was trying to address specifically.
Well, no, I appreciate, I appreciate your, your enlightening because there's some folks that don't really know and I appreciate you doing that. The only thing that troubled me is that the last meeting, we had a couple of folks that say. That they knew that if we went ahead and just passed a moratorium, we're going to get sued. And the citizens of Pender County are going to pick up the bill. And they're going to have to pay that lawsuit when we lose. And they're ready to do it, but not all citizens are ready to do that. There, there's a couple of people, and if a couple of people wanted to put their money together, that's fine, but the seventy thousand people in this county, I don't think are ready to do that. Especially the fixed income retirees that live paycheck to paycheck. But I think this, like I say, this, this lies in Raleigh.
Well, and the, the other part is if we adopt something without going through all the required steps. A judge is going to enjoin us doing anything with it, you know, in a week. I mean, literally. Because it, it's all spelled out. The judge is just going to go check, check, oh, you didn't, you didn't check this box. Nope. You can't enforce your moratorium. So. We would need to spend some time, um, and I could work with Mr. Brantley on some of that, but I mean. You know, because that would be part of it is what are, are we focusing on and, and try to move ahead.
We want to make sure what we do is prudent for, for the citizens.
Yes, sir. And also effective. I mean, I, you know, I, in my experience, this, this board is not big on. What the law refer to as a vain and useless act. Again, it's not going to accomplish anything, you know, this, this board wants to actually do something. And to do it, we've got to follow all those steps or it won't be enforceable. And it won't be our choice. It'll be a judge that says, nope, and it won't take on.
Thank you so much, Mr. Thurman, for your presentation. All right, item six point seven, Mr. Charlie Ring, uh, presentation on code enforcement. No, ma'am, not, we just, you have to come up and speak during the, uh, public comment and we'd be glad to listen to you if you're signed up. I hopefully, I hope you are. Okay, good deal. Mr. Ring.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Charlie Ring. I'm the Code Enforcement Officer for Pender County. Had a discussion with the, uh, county manager and she wanted me to come up and give you a little background on what I do since it is kind of a new board. And I haven't had the opportunity to really speak to many of the people on this board. Um, I am the code enfor. Is it, how about now?
I think it's, I think yours stays on. You just probably got to get close to it.
Okay, good. How's that? Perfect. Um, I am the Code Enforcement Officer for Pender County. And my primary responsibility is responding to complaints from any source within the county. Whether it's the citizens, uh, whether it's this board, whether a complaint comes into the county manager. Uh, it should all get directed to me. We've got a, uh, a, um. Portion of our unit out here that sends emails to me from people and I review them every day. And those are. In addition to me as the Code Enforcement Officer, the planning department, we, we take, um. Great efforts in understanding that a complaint is important to people. And I want to make sure that it's important to me and they get responded to properly. I've been doing this job for twelve years now and basically when I get a complaint from an individual, I open up. A possible violation case. I'm going to review everything that they do or that, that they respond to me saying that has been done. Some cases are violations of the U D O, some are not. I deal with zoning violations. Some specific things would be solid waste, complaint about solid waste in my neighbors, garbage in my neighbor's property. A inoperable junk vehicle, that's violation. Building code violations, people building without permits, it starts with me from the zoning area. So I, I do, I, I concentrate on these people, talk to them, find out where the, uh, situation is, what property is, and I go out and I do a site visit. And I, and I look for whatever it is that they're complaining about and I'll photograph that and then I'll come back and open up a case. Sometimes these things work out, sometimes they are violations, sometimes they're not. If they're not, I take the time to explain to somebody why. Their complaint doesn't fall under a category that we can do. Let me just take a minute to explain the notices of violation that I, that I, um. Send out to these property owners and then I'm going to get to a point where I'm, I'm going to explain to you where my authority stops. I think that's real important that everybody knows where my authority stops. First notice of violation is written. For thirty days, giving those people the opportunity to, to fix that violation, to bring that property back into compliance. And at the end of thirty days, if it's done, violation is gone, no fines. Day thirty-one starts what we call a final notice of violation. One hundred dollars a day starts day thirty-one for thirty more days. If the violation is not brought into compliance, then my last notice of violation is called a court order compliance complaint that goes. Initially to the director of my department, he emails it to the county manager and to whatever attorney is going to be assigned to this case. This, this is where I've got to be very clear as to where my authority stops. It stops there. I don't have any authority to go to court and do what an attorney does. This is where it stops for me unless the attorney comes back to me and wants some additional assistance on it. You may receive. Contact from a complainant and they may say that Pender County is not doing anything. Code enforcement, Charlie Ring, he, he's not doing anything. It's because I've reached this state with the notifications and I can't do anymore and my, my, uh, advice to them is that. This case is now with the county attorney. The county attorney is going to be studying the case and determining whether it's not, it's going to go to court. And if it does go to court, they set up the paperwork, they set up the process to get a court date. A lot of people expect that we can turn these, uh, complaint problems around immediately, but when we're in court. There's a long period of time sometimes before we get a court date and it even gets there. So like I was saying, if, if you happen to receive an additional complaint for somebody that says we haven't done it. Please call me. Let me explain to you that I'm, I'm very positive in, in the fact that I'm going to be telling you that's where, that's where we are in that step.
Thank you, Mr. Ring. Any questions for Mr. Ring?
I'd like to point out a little bit if you, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a good segue into our, uh, new legal team that we have brought over, um, to our administrative building. You know, in the past, this is all kind of, you know, as Charlie said, it, it, the follow through has been challenging, right? Because, uh, we didn't have a county attorney specifically, you know, Trey is the board's attorney. Um, so we created a county attorney position several years ago. Um, it's turned over a couple of times. So what we've done now is we've created a legal team. That serves Pender County as a whole and we are there in the back. Quentin Morgan and Amber are back there and, um, they have another teammate, Aquino, who's going to help us with that. Um, and looking for an additional to join their team. Um, but. They will be working very closely with Charlie to, to make this process, get it across the finish line. We have a few that have gotten across the finish line. Um, sometimes they turn into a whole other challenge, um, that you have to. Address in a different way. Um, so we're going to work together to, to create a very seamless process to get those across the finish line.
Well, thank you, Ms. Blue. Um, one thing I do want to say is welcome Quentin. To the team and being our county attorney, we've lacked in that area for some time. And we welcome you and your staff to, uh, help give guidance to us and the county and serve the citizens. Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Ring, I, how many, how, how big a staff do you have in the zoning and compliance office?
Me, one.
Yeah, I said that because I know, I knew that.
You knew the answer to that.
But I want citizens to see that. So we're eight, we're, we're nine, like nine hundred forty-six square miles. Seventy-one thousand people. How many complaints do you get weekly?
Probably eight to ten.
So eight to ten.
You don't have to answer that.
I say that to say, to say, uh, I think you need some help. Because when citizens call you, they're usually at their end of their rope on some issues that are very important to them. And they need to see action, not just a phone call saying, yeah, we'll put it on our books and put it on the radar. And, and I say that saying that we support you in what you do, but I think you need some help. And hopefully with Mr. Quentin coming on now and maybe if we can get you an assistant or someone in the field. That can, can respond to these citizen complaints, I think that will be even better.
Right. It, it's, it's hard, the time that's expended. To start in the office and start the clerical work and then know that you've got to drive this nine hundred something miles of, of the entire county. And that takes hours of that trip and I'll receive calls in there, you know, and I'll call them back and I'll have to explain to them that. I was out in the field, you know, trying to work on situation, maybe similar to the one that you're complaining with me about right now.
And we get, we get those calls that we called and we reported this and that and the other and nothing's happening and we try to explain to them that they're very busy. And there's one individual that tries his best. But I think we're going to advocate for you to try and to get you some help.
That would be terrific. And, and please, I'm, I'm explaining this to all of you on the, call me. If somebody's complaining to you, you're probably hearing one side of the story. You're not hearing the fact that this case is. Yeah, okay.
There's always yours and mine and the truth in the middle.
Somewhere. Yeah, so, you know, please, please don't hesitate to call me.
I requested this presentation tonight because I think I get a lot of calls east to west. Such as a person that recently called from Costa Pender over in Surf City. I think it was seventy-five bags of trash that's been out in person in the yard for some time, months and months and so forth. And it does become a nuisance to that person, property, its neighbor, not joining property. If you have a well landscaped yard and you invest in your property and your neighbor have seventy-five bags of trash out there. And it brings down your value and your esteem. So, um, and then also with the, um, wildlife and other things that happens there and it impacts a lot. So I also think that we need to do something to give you more support, but I also believe. That if you're going out making a case and we're not following up on that, and this is not a new issue. This is an issue we talked about ten years ago.
Yes, sir.
If this is, if we're not enforcing it in the courts, then your work, you have spent your time, all of those resources for null and avoid. We have to make sure, and I'm glad to know Attorney Martin, um, Morgan. Who I have full faith in, um, is coming on and joining the team as well. Um, and have oversight over the enforcement piece. So of the cases that you, um, how many cases did you have last year reported?
Probably. One twenty, one thirty, something like that.
And how many of those prevailed at the court level?
I currently have. Twenty-eight cases that are. New to two years old that need to go to court. And then I have an additional fourteen that go from two years to eight years and that's going to present a problem. With the older ones. And if you go to court and you stand in front of a judge and just says, you know, Mr. Code Enforcement Officer. How come this case is taking you eight years to get to court? We need to have their help and, and, uh, it's a blessing to have their help right now and I, I appreciate what Meg has done for us with that, that it's going to be a tremendous help.
It's like Mr. Quentin has got a full calendar.
And, and he's not only mine, he's every, everybody. So, yeah, it's, it's, there's going to be a schedule and meetings and a lot of things just to, to keep, to keep the ball rolling.
Taking baby steps. We're trying to, to move forward and doing what's right.
Yes, sir.
And let me say, I hope that we do have some paralegal and other team members that's going to join him. Because I also understand he has oversight over H R management and some other areas with legal review as well. And so if he's going to be in court with those twenty-eight current cases and people are calling every day east to west. You're going to also be out of the field in court as well. We got to move expeditiously if that's an item that we need to bring back to the budget. To amend our budget to look at getting you some assistance. I think that that's something that we need to do expeditiously. Not just talk about it. We need to bring it back at the next agenda meeting to look at advertising, not moving expeditiously on getting you all the help.
Yes, sir.
There is one motion for the next meeting.
I'll make it.
Thank you, Mr. Ring.
Thank you so much.
All right. So that brings us to the end of the public information and we'll move on to. Oh, that's right. W M P O, right? Let's, yeah, W M P O, we'll do that for six point eight. We'll make that six point eight. W M P O, welcome.
Hello. Um, hi, everyone. Can you guys all hear me? My name is Beth King. I'm a transportation planner with the Wilmington Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, um, also known as the W M P O. And today I will be presenting on our metropolitan transportation plan, Cape Fear Navigating Change twenty fifty. Um, so the first thing I'm going to talk about in this presentation, and I'm going to try and keep it brief because we've seen a lot of presentations tonight. Um, first thing I'm going to go over is the W M P O and what our responsibilities are as an organization. Then we'll go over kind of the meat of the presentation will be about the Metropolitan Transportation Plan itself. Um, I'll go over what's included in that document and then. Lastly, and I think most importantly, go over how this M T P is going to support Pender County and how Pender County can support the M T P. Um, so the Wilmington Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, or the W M P O, was formed in nineteen seventy-three. M P Os are metropolitan planning organizations are federally required agencies for urban areas with a population of over fifty thousand. So the W M P O was formed in nineteen seventy-three and we currently serve a population of over three hundred thousand people. The planning area covers around four hundred ninety-four square miles, including all of New Hanover County. And the jurisdictions within that, um, Brunswick County, including Leland, Belleville and Navassa. And then the southern portion of Pender County. We are governed by a thirteen member board, which has representatives from each member jurisdiction, um, including two from the city of Wilmington. A New Hanover County Commissioner that also represents the Cape Fear Public Transportation Authority. And a state-appointed North Carolina Board of Transportation Representative. So the W M P O does a lot of different things. Um, I will try and keep it as simple as possible for the purposes of this presentation. Um, but we're federally required to plan and prioritize how federal transportation dollars are spent within the region. Um, this is accomplished through what's called the three Cs planning process, which stands for cooperative, comprehensive and continuing. We are also federally required to update and maintain the Metropolitan Transportation Plan every five years. Prepare an annual work plan, which is also called the Unified Planning Work Program or the U P W P. We assist in the prioritization of transportation projects throughout the region for the development of the state. Slash M P O Transportation Improvement Program, or what you might have heard be called the T I P or the S T I P. And we also coordinate the activities of the W M P O Board and the Technical Coordinating Committee or our T C C. So a metropolitan transportation plan is what we're talking about today. It is federally required part of a M P O. Um, it is kind of the basis for the expenditure of federal transportation dollars for a region. The M T P is basically a blueprint for the next twenty-five years of what the transportation needs of the region are. And the current W M P O M T P Cape Fear Navigating Change twenty fifty was adopted by the W M P O Board on October twenty ninth, twenty twenty-five. Um, and we'll be updating it by October twenty ninth, twenty thirty. Federal law requires a M T P to be multimodal. Um, in this region, we have six modes of transportation, including aviation, bicycle and pedestrian. Ferry and water transportation, rail, public transportation and roadway. It must be fiscally constrained, which means that the expenditures are constrained realistically within funded. Uh, or projected funding forecasts. It must have a minimum twenty-year planning horizon. We use twenty-five years. Um, and it must adhere to our public participation plan and be consistent with local end-use plans. We actually started this process back in August twenty twenty-two. Um, during that time, we were doing behind, behind the scenes works and preparations, uh, before we took it to the public in twenty twenty-three. Um, we convened a Metropolitan Transportation Plan Technical Steering Committee, also known as the M T P C. Which was made up of subject matter experts from around the region in transportation, public health, education, emergency management and other things like that. As well as a Citizens Advisory Committee or a C A C, which was made up of volunteer representatives from each, uh. Member jurisdiction appointed by our board and they guided our public outreach and our, more of our public facing work. Public outreach phase one was where we first met the community with this plan and kind of took them through the process. And got feedback on what their, they thought, uh, the region needed in terms of transportation. Um, and then after that phase closed in February twenty twenty-four through the end of twenty twenty-four, we drafted a vision, goals and objectives. Um, we worked with our member jurisdictions on our modal project development. Um, we worked with our member jurisdictions on our modal project development and we also focused on the financial element. Um, and then in the summer, we released a draft plan and had that open for public comment as a phase two. And then after that public comment period closed, we finalized the plan and took the, the, the MTP to the WMPO Technical Coordinating Committee and our board, and then our board adopted it in October. This is just a visual representation, so you can see it spans multiple years and a lot of different hands were kind of at play with getting this done. Um, and we just want to make sure that we emphasize how much this reflects public involvement and stakeholder participation, as well as our partnership with Pender County. So in our public outreach phase one, we took the, the plan to the public and kind of asked them what they thought we needed to focus on for transportation in our, in our region. Um, this resulted in ninety-six in-person comments, over two thousand three hundred survey responses, over three thousand two hundred map comments, and nearly six thousand map pins. So people were able to tell us exactly what they thought we needed to work on over the next twenty-five years. And this kind of summarizes what we found. Um, we were able to figure out, um, what people wanted to focus on in the future, their, their future priorities. So people want to be able to walk more, bike more, use public transportation to get places they want to go. Um, they also wanted us to continue to focus on safety, congestion relief, and public transportation access, as well as bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. Um, so that public input from phase one, as well as the WMPO's mission and vision, um, as well as a spot analysis done by the MTPC, also called a SWOT analysis, so strengths, problems, opportunities, and threats. We were able to put those all together and create a vision statement that kind of guided the rest of the development of the MTP. So this is our vision statement in the MTP. Our region will thrive and prosper through a fair and resilient transportation network that supports regional economic vitality while improving quality of life for residents and enhancing quality of place for neighborhoods. Um, this vision was then put, uh, along with the WMPO's internal organizational strategic plan, as well as federal planning factors um, as part of, of being a WM, the WMPO. And those were combined to create five goals. These are safe, fair, connected, resilient, and proactive. So these goals guided, um, how we were able to prioritize and rank our projects. So this kind of shows the flow of the vision, goals, to then modal objectives. So we wanted to narrow down how these goals are going to define success for each transportation mode. And those objectives were then used as scoring criteria, so we were able to assign point values to each project that was submitted, as well as create policies. Um, our regional priority projects were developed from our member jurisdictions and their identified needs. So we worked directly with Pender County staff and they were able to submit to us projects that they identified as needs for the next twenty-four, twenty-five years. Um, in these five transportation modes, aviation is excluded as a modal project list because of ILM's own, you know, capital funding and the way that they're able to do things is a little different than other modes of transportation. Um, we also were able to project cost estimates using twenty twenty-four dollars. So a critical component of the plan is the financial forecast. This is the fiscal constraint requirement that I talked about earlier. Um, this projects the region's available federal, state, and local funds through twenty fifty. The forecast provides a realistic picture based on today's traditional funding sources and their current revenues of the funding resources the region can realistically expect to receive over the next twenty-five years. To achieve the federal requirement for fiscal constraint, the financial forecast was considered against ranked priority project roadway, or ranked priority project roadway list. High-ranking projects with estimated costs falling within forecasted revenue amount were fiscally constrained and are the roadway priority project recommendations of the MTP. Um, throughout this, this financial forecast, we identified a significant funding gap of seven point nine billion dollars of unfunded, unfunded priority roadway needs. Um, this is in addition to almost three billion in bicycle, pedestrian, ferry, rail, and public transportation projects. So because of this gap, we worked with the WMPO Board to identify alternative funding sources um, that have been typically used in North Carolina and other parts of the US. Um, this could include things like a quarter cent local option sales tax, vehicle registration fees, short-term vehicle rental taxes, and other options. So this provides kind of the groundwork for our member jurisdictions to kind of consider these alternative funding sources locally. Um, once the draft plan was finalized, we took it back out to the public to make sure that we captured what we heard from phase one. So we held, um, two open houses, five pop-up events, and we received fifty-seven comments during this phase of outreach. We were able to address every single comment, um, so they're included in the plan. Um, however, no comments resulted in modifications to the modal project lists. This is an overview of what is included in the document. It's pretty long. Um, there are six chapters in the main body. Um, it kind of takes you through what I just talked about, but in way more detail. Um, and then we also have fourteen appendices, which kind of provides the data and the background information. Um, that kind of gives you a better understanding of how we got to what we talked about in the first six chapters. Um, so the MTP document establishes the long-range vision, goals, and strategies for regional transportation through twenty fifty. Um, the table at the bottom kind of outlines the amount of projects that are recommended in the plan for each mode, again, aviation being excluded. Um, also included in the plan is a short-range transportation demand management plan for our Go Coast program. Um, it also has the regional travel demand model with the base year of twenty twenty-one and future year twenty fifty. So that kind of gives a look at how the region may develop over the next twenty-five years and also that alternative funding analysis. Um, this is a snapshot of some of the projects that are included in the MTP for Pender County specifically, only roadway, bicycle, pedestrian here. Um, this is taken directly from conversations with Pender County staff and, um, I, all the information about these projects is included in the document. Um, the MTP is, the purpose is for it to integrate with other local plans, transportation plans, for a bigger impact. So the WMPO directly works with NC DOT to prioritize and program projects. So integration with local land use transportation plans is really important to make sure that we're getting these projects on the ground. Um, it also would be great, um, for Pender County to continue to stay engaged and participate in WMPO activities. Um, the WMPO is here for all of our member jurisdictions. Um, we love to help out with transportation-related issues that you guys may be experiencing. Um, so this is a great way to kind of have that back and forth with the county and the WMPO. Um, this is just a long list of everyone who has been a part of this process. Um, Mr. George is on the WMPO Board, so shout out. Um, and you can find the plan in a hard copy at our office in downtown Wilmington. We also will be distributing copies, copies at, um, local libraries and it's also available online at our website. Are there any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any questions? I just want you to add one acronym to your priorities. You use a lot of those.
Yeah.
Uh, EPC?
EPC.
Just add that on there. Eastern Pender County.
Okay.
For roadways. Thanks. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Right. That brings us to the end of the public information. So public comment, uh, Mr. Thurman, you said twenty-something signed up?
Yes, sir.
How many have?
Uh, twenty-three.
Twenty-three? All right. So this brings us to the portion where we have public comments. I'm going to read a little something before the attorney calls everyone up. Speakers will be announced by the board chair's person in the order the names appear on the sheet. Speakers shall address the board from the podium and begin comments by stating their name and address, please. Speakers shall be courteous and respectful in their remarks and shall refrain from personal attacks and use, uh, and the use of profanity and the discussion of any personnel matters deemed confidential by law. And speakers, each speaker tonight will have three minutes. Call you first speaker, sir.
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. Um, and if with your approval, I'm going to call two people. They have one ready, so we're not having the, the transition time. When we have this many people, that seems to help.
So he's going to call the first name and, and the second name he calls will be the on-deck, ready person.
Right. And you can, you can be ready. You can stand over there behind, or you can sit. We have open chairs over there and they're probably more comfortable than the chair you're sitting in now. So, um, all right. Diane Venizali is up next and then on deck, Craig Myrick.
Ms. Venizali, welcome.
Hello, my name is Diane Venizal and I live at one twenty-five Middle Point Road in Hampstead, North Carolina. I'm the mother of four young children, all under the age of six. My family's very active in the local sports community and we spend a lot of time at the Hampstead Kiwanis Park Playground at Slope Point Loop Road and Country Club Road, often several times a week. I'm here tonight because what should be a safe and joyful place for our children has become a serious concern. Children are getting injured on the playground. There's been two children that have been hurt to the point where they've had to be taken by ambulance. The equipment is rusty, corroded, and deteriorating from the inside out. Several broken components have already been removed for safety, leaving open gaps that invite unsafe play. This playground cannot be properly repaired. It was installed twenty-five years ago and it simply no longer meets modern safety standards. At this point, replacement is the only responsible and cost-effective solution. Many parents don't realize how bad the damage is until they're on the playground themselves. And for a community like Hampstead, which now makes up nearly half of Pender County's population, it's unacceptable. Our children deserve a safe, clean, and welcoming place to play and grow. To support this effort, I prepared a presentation, which I handed out last meeting on the twentieth, with photos showing current color photo of the condition and proposed replacement plan for your review. I also emailed it to each of you. I also collected a petition with over five hundred signatures in the last month and a half from residents in Hampstead asking for a new playground equipment. Aside from that, Kaitlin Brown, who's also here tonight, has a petition that she'll speak on as well. Together, these show a clear and longstanding message, message from Hampstead families that we want a safe, inclusive, family-friendly recreational spaces. As we plan for a replacement, I urge the county to focus on accessibility and inclusion. Equipment designed for children of all abilities, not just a single wheelchair swing that only two people in the county have access and a key to, and was kept locked. We should also include shade structures, more benches, and water fountains that accommodate both drinking and bottle filling. These simple additions make a big difference in comfort, safety, and accessibility. Many families also want a splash pad as well. Finally, I ask that the project be scheduled for winter, when the park use is lowest, so it can be ready for families by next spring. An investment in this playground is an investment in our children, our families, the future of one of Pender County's fastest communities.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you for your time.
Now, I'll ask, I'll just ask if you, um, if you'll stick around for item nine point one, you'll probably get some questions answered.
Ms. Myrick, uh, and on deck, Lindsey Williams.
Mr. Myrick, welcome, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, I'm going to second on Diane's. My name's Craig Minett. I live at four sixteen West Windward Landing Place in Hampstead. And, uh, I'm here to ask the county to prioritize new playground equipment for Hampstead Kiwanis Park. Little background, I live in Middle Point South Division, which is pretty close to Kiwanis Park, uh, with my wife and my two little girls. Uh, I moved here from San Jose, Silicon Valley, California, uh, in October, twenty twenty, right sort of in the heart of COVID time. Uh, at the time, we had a sixteen-month-old and a newborn and we were living in a little condo. So, um, a major part of our motivation to leave California was to, uh, get a location where we felt good, planting roots essentially and raising our girls. Uh, but before moving here, interestingly, we sort of considered almost every state and then we landed on the North Carolina coast and then we landed on Hampstead. And finally, our neighborhood for three big reasons, the beach, the schools, and Kiwanis Park. That was a big one for us. So our girls really loved the park for the first couple of years. It is, it was really good. Uh, we spent a lot of time there as a family and when I think back about it, we made a lot of special memories. A lot of my, I mean, my kids are six and five and a lot of my memories are of watching them grow up at that park was, was great. Uh, when the equipment started to get in disrepair, we started to go less often. It was a little unsafe, some of the areas, and just, just broken. Uh, I know some repairs were made, but it became obvious that, uh, some of the equipment just wasn't repairable. It almost looks like this, this vendor didn't think of, uh, salty air was not part of their plan. And so, you know, maybe it was good for Arizona, but not Florida or North Carolina. So anyway, we go into Surf City or Wilmington and I'm here to ask the county to prioritize renewing the playground equipment. Uh, we'd love to see it become as good or better than it was originally. Uh, splash pad would be fantastic also. And then, um, you know, we could, we could make some more memories there. It'd be awesome, watching my girls grow up there. Um, and I, I would just, you know, it's been great being at this meeting and seeing everybody connect. I'm from the Silicon Valley. It's like the heart of like tech space. And I like being in Hampstead where human beings actually speak to each other again and we're not just like in the internet. So Kiwanis Park is not just like a place for kids to, to play, right? It's sort of almost like a de facto, like, uh, town center for that area. New people come in, parents talk, we learn where the restaurants are, who's got the babysitters, where the places to go are. So while we're sitting there watching our kids play, we're also talking and, and, you know, becoming a community, which I think is so critical. Twenty twenty-five, AI, everything that, like, let's try to make sure that we, we, we stay connected to each other as much as possible. Does it? Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Williams, you're up next. Kaitlin Brown on deck.
Hello. Uh, my name is Lindsey Williams. I live at forty-two Lemongrass Court in Hampstead. I am also here to be a third person to chat about the park, Kiwanis Park. Uh, it's a space meant for fun and connection, but as you've heard already, right now it's unsafe. The equipment is corroding from the inside out and what looks like a fresh coat of spray paint hides rust and deteriorating, deteriorating metal from underneath. What sparked my curiosity to look deeper at the structures was there was a spike sticking out of the middle of the ground where a, uh, piece of round plastic was covering it originally and that had broken, so they just took that away and they left the spike up. Uh, and as a parent of two really energetic boys, ages three and five, uh, we were there two to three times a week for soccer and we used to schedule playdates at the parks as well. And then after seeing those hazards firsthand, I no longer let them play at the playground. And if you're a parent or if you've ever had a toddler, you can imagine the tantrums that come from that boundary. With that rapid growth in the area, more families and children moving in, it's more important now than ever to make sure our park is safe and welcoming. And as you've heard, uh, as you might hear, I don't think anybody mentioned this previously, but, uh, the County Parks Department recommended replacing the playground back in twenty twenty. Uh, there was a previous petition for a splash pad that got nearly a thousand signatures and, uh, almost moved forward, but then COVID happened, so that delayed things. Uh, now we're five years from that recommendation and that petition. And winter is the perfect time to move forward with the replacement. Uh, usage will be lower, minimizing disruption, and by spring, they could have a new playground. I'm just asking you to please support this motion to move this forward. Uh, it's for the much-needed replacement of this playground and our growing community and the children deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Brown, you're up. On deck, Mary King.
Welcome, Ms. Brown.
Hello, my name is Kaitlin Brown and I live at one fifteen Roughleaf Trail in Hampstead. And I am here to speak of the, um, Kiwanis Park and also to add some more detail to the splash pad need. Um, about six years ago, I created a petition and presented it to you all, the board, asking for a splash pad for our community. And at that time, we had over eight hundred signatures, so the need and the desire was definitely there. But unfortunately, the pandemic caused a lot of projects to be put on pause and that was one that was put on pause. Um, I've been in contact with Zach on and off for the past five years and they, um, I was told that it was always on the docket, but I would like to kind of push that forward a little bit, um, as we still have a need. Um, in fact, it has only grown. As we know, our population in Hampstead has exploded. Um, there are more young families, more children, and more people using the park than ever before. Um, so I am requesting a splash pad, um, that would accommodate toddlers through pre-teens, give our older kids a place to play, since, um, I had one child at that time and now I have three reambunctious boys and they definitely all went to play on that. Um, that would offer a safe, fun, and inclusive way for children to cool off and play, um, especially during the hot, hot summer months. I know many new neighborhoods have pools, but we live in an older neighborhood that does not have a pool. And since we don't really have a public pool in Hampstead, um, it, it's definitely needed, um, so we can have a place to cool down and be outside. Um, in addition to building the splash pad, um, we are also advocating, I am one of those, to replacing the playground equipment, um, so we can have a safe place for our kids to play. Of course, safety is our first priority, um, and we would like to continue using the fun equipment and be outside as much as possible. and be outside as much as possible. Um, six years ago, this project was needed, and today it is essential. Our community has grown, and our public spaces should grow with it. Um, a new playground and splash pad would show, um, the community that we care about them and the safety and health and quality of all of our lives. Um, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. King, you're up. Uh, Beth Butler on deck.
Hello, and thank you, everyone, for, um, hearing us speak, and thank you for all of the tough decisions that you all have to make. I greatly appreciate that. Uh, my name is Mary King Batley, and I am a resident in Hampstead. I live at thirty-eight Strawberry Fields Way, just blocks away from the Kiwanis Park. Um, my husband and I moved here from the west coast, um, in, in service with the military. Uh, my husband did twenty-one years of service in our family, all for that, uh, burden as well, uh, with, um, uh, Purple Hearts and, um, all of the service accolades along with that. Um, the park has been a place that me and my three girls have gone to create community. Um, it is, it has a special place in my heart where, where I'd meet with other military spouses when their husbands were deployed as well. Um, it was a place that we took our children to, um, engage in sports activity and increase their athleticism and their health in general. I do feel very strongly that in our community right now, um, with kids being on their electronics and their phones, it is very important that we have an opportunity to take our kids to a community park that is fully functional. And I second the fact of, uh, a splash pad as well, because I do think that it's important that we have some outdoor play during the summer months if you do not have a pool. In my community, there are forty-two houses, and we don't have a pool. Um, and so it would be very nice because greatly, graciously, and I'm so thankful because you did, um, there is a walkway, uh, a sidewalk, hooray, in Pender County that gets us from our community to the park, so we're very thankful for that. Um, and, and the work that was done to have that completed. And I have full, you know, confidence in this, you know, board that you're gonna be able to get this project done because of how important it is for our young people. Because, you know, someone else that's in Pender County, just like Desmond Jordan, that you are all really proud of, that I'm really proud of, like, that's another community, that's another young person that could be, you know, encouraged into that same aspect with, with all of the work that we're doing with renewing the park. So I greatly appreciate all your hard work, and so, so thankful that I was able to be here to talk tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Butler, next. On deck, Lance Roselle.
Ms. Butler, welcome.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak in front of you to, um, this evening. I am here as a community leader, PTA, um, representative, and mom that's talked to hundreds of family members in our community in support for a replacement of the playground. Um, Hampstead not being an incorporated municipality, we don't have a community building. Our park is our community. It's where our parents gather, it's where our senior citizens can come and walk a safe track, it's where our, our kids can come and play. Well, I'm there three to four days a week with sports activities, enjoying the community. On Saturday, we're having a trash pickup at the park where we're having kids come pick up trash. On Sunday, we're having a party in the park where we're expecting over five thousand community members, which I invite you all out to come meet and enjoy the park and meet our community and see how much we love the park. The county has done a wonderful job band-aiding problems and issues that we've had with the park. But the park is twenty-five years old, um, due to environmental issues, you know, salt, corrosion, wear and tear, just the age of it. It needs replacement. And we are here for, again, public safety issues. We have had two issues where EMS has had to come out to kids that have had, in the past months, that have had injuries at the park. So we're here again at a safety issue. Do we wait till somebody gets hurt or killed or an emergency happens before we can mitigate a problem that's already there? So we are here again, and I am here, and for hundreds of parents that are watching online that weren't able to come, please take this into consideration. And the splash pad would be such a blessing. I know we're getting a splash, the, the west side of the county is getting a splash pad in Burgal. If we had one on the east side of the county for tourists, for community, it would just be such a wonderful thing for our county and our community members that, that want it so much. Again, thank you for your time. We invite you out again this weekend to the park, um, to see the place where we have community and gather. So, thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Roselle, welcome, sir.
Tom Brown, on deck.
As many of you guys are aware, back in August of twenty twenty-four, I was illegally detained and falsely arrested by Sheriff's Department while parked inside a road for trespassing. Um, it has taken me over fifteen months to finally get the charges dropped as of two weeks ago. And those fifteen months have cost me over twenty-five thousand dollars for attorney fees, for travel expenses coming back and forth, on top of wasting all my time to deal with all this. Um, in those last fifteen months, I have submitted over twenty public records requests to several members that are sitting in this room right now, and all of them are going unanswered because your representative Trey Termin is telling them not to answer my public records request. As recent as two weeks ago, I sent an email to five different people sitting in this room right now. Embedded in those emails was what was called Read Receipts. That shows that Meg Blue opened up the emails, Ms. Tracy right there opened up the emails, Trey Termin opened them up, and the sheriff opened up those emails and read them. However, those public records requests was not answered or not acknowledged. Um, at this time, in the fifteen, again, fifteen months that's cost me all this, I have been trying to do my best to, to get this done everywhere, but no, no help from the county in getting this done. Jerry Groves approached me several weeks ago and admitted that he watched the videos that are on YouTube and stated that there's no wrongdoing done, but yet nothing is being done about that. The sheriff, on a recorded phone conversation, admitted himself that no wrongdoing was done, and he never did anything to help get these charges dismissed. At this time, right now, you guys will be being served with two different lawsuits. The first lawsuit is a civil lawsuit against the Sheriff's Department for body cam videos that shows at the officer's perspectives that I was on the public right of way, and I was not on any county-owned property.
Yeah, you may come up.
The second lawsuit you're being served with is a lawsuit that includes the Sheriff's Department, the sheriff himself, the three deputies that was out there. This lawsuit also includes Trey Termin and part of county commissioners due to the fact that several members on the county commissioners at that time was aware of what was going on, and nothing was being done about it. I challenge at this time right now, I have a stamped date copy showing that I submitted a complaint to Sheriff's Department about the deputy's misconduct going on. At this time, the Sheriff's Department is stating that they have no records that's being done. I have a stamped, uh, timestamp copy of it and a recording being dropped off. Again, in the last fifteen months, I have requested documentation asking for the probable cause affidavits and everything that was being done, and I'm still being told that, uh, per Trey Termin not to give out these records. So I challenge your new attorneys to sit there and try to get these records from the county and see what's actually been on there, what's, what's being done, and what was, was being done. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
By the way, Mrs. Springer, have you figured out who sent those text messages about the checks being posted on site, on the county's website?
Your time's up, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, on deck, Gina Marasco.
Good afternoon. Good evening. My name's Tom Brown. I live at eighteen eighty-one Henry Brown Road, Burgal. I just want to say thank you for the town hall meetings that we so much requested over a long period of time. And I thank Ms. Blue and Ms. Fulton for the, all the good information they gave us at the town hall meetings. The only problem with it, we didn't get any answers. We had two commissioners that gave answers, uh, that we asked for. The rest of them either didn't show up or didn't answer any questions. So town hall meetings were great if they were done right, but I don't think they were. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Marasco, up. On deck, Alan Bloom.
Good evening. My name is Gina Marasco. I reside at sixty-two sixty-five NC Highway fifty-three West in Burgal. I'm a longstanding native of North Carolina, and I serve on the voluntary ag district. And as of today, I learned that there was a town hall meeting, and it was discussed by several, or at least one of the commissioners, that the DOT and that commissioner was going to be visiting our farm as well as Stuart Balkum's farm. And to date, no one has. So I wanted to make the record very clear that that was not done. That was a mistaken comment made, and I wanted to make sure that everyone, including the community and the citizens, were aware that that was wrong information that was given. We are still waiting to meet with the DOT regarding the ditch situation in front of our property, but that has not taken place, and Mr. Balkum has also stated the same. The second thing that I would like to share with you is that there could be a resolution to your playground situation. It's called www/playworld.com. They have grant guides available for nonprofits as well as communities and such. So I highly recommend that you look into this because you may have a wonderful opportunity to have some funding through a grant to help make this playground issue become a non-issue of safety any longer. And the third thing I'd like to say, please, is that as a citizen of Pender County, and I serve on various boards in the county, we do need to see action from our board. We had the town hall meetings. I second Mr. Brown's comments. We appreciated those opportunities, but we do not see any clear action taken or answers given based on what we brought forth to you as citizens. So I would completely urge you very strongly to take notice of the voices that you're hearing instead of turning away what seems like a deaf ear. Because we, as voting citizens, expect our voices to be heard and heeded because we care about the community, and we know that you do as well. We just need to see evidence of that. So I thank you for your time, and I look forward to the resolution of the DOT matter. And I hope that you will look into the playground dot com or playworld dot com. It could help you a lot. And just know that as a citizen of this county and other people, I have encouraged to do so with me. We are praying for all of you because you need it. We all need it. But, um, just remember who's really in charge, and, uh, submit to that, and you'll make the best decisions ever. Thank you so much.
Ms. Marasco, before you go, where's your farm? Where, where's your farm?
We are one half mile west of, um, Pender High School at sixty-six eleven NC Highway fifty-three West.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On deck, Cindy James Moore.
Mr. Bloom, welcome.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
It's nighttime now.
Yeah, yeah, it is, right? I've been here quite a while. I want to thank the commissioners and the board for clearly listening to us on our last meeting, and thank you, Justin, for all your hard work. Tonight, we're here to show citizens the importance of getting involved in local government because that's how real change should happen. We want to help shape our county's future, but without binding authority for the TRC and the commissioners, we will only be able to stand by and watch a misguided planning board shape it for us. This is about helping the people learn how to communicate with our county leaders, especially when we see development moving forward in the wrong direction. Overcrowding Old Point with the private track development and developing on future collector roads that would have prevented the, like, the seventeen being, holding us hostage last Wednesday on a huge traffic jam. This is an example of development going in the wrong direction. We all want smart development. That means planning with schools, infrastructure, and families in mind, creating places where our community can live, learn, and gather. We don't want to just live in this county. We want to feel like we are a true part of it. But right now, citizens don't have the tools to create the changes we need. For that to happen, we need change. Change of policies, change of our UDO oversight, and change of management. Right now, you, the commissioners, have the power to give the citizens back their voice. We need binding authority to the TRC and the oversight that can guide the right kind of development. We need to bring developers to the table for real collaboration. We want to work with the citizens and the developers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Moore, on deck, Frankie Saunders.
Good afternoon, good evening to you all. I applaud you all for being such great representatives for us, the individuals here in Pender County. My name is Cindy James Moore, eight seven seven Webtown Road, Maple Hill, North Carolina. The twenty fifty Comprehensive Land Use Plan, is this the progress for our county, our future, our communities? Well, let's look at a few things. A community, once with a post office, now a truck that is parked for a couple of hours that you can buy a stamp or mail a letter. A community school, once, now changed to a walking trail. Great, isn't it? Well, that's not all. We have, and this does not actually affect our commissioners, but we have ditches that once were used for drainage, now have trees that are growing up in it, bushes, and anything else may crawl out of it. That's, it makes it look like a jungle when you travel through one area known as Webtown Road of Maple Hill, North Carolina. You don't have to go to a foreign land to see what a jungle looks like. Well, then we have a waste, a waste center, convenience center. Well, we were able to utilize it for many things. Now it has been and is only used as a dumpster. We can only use it for just a few things with limited use and service provided now. Well, wow, what's going on? I say it's time for us to tune in and listen to our local news station. I think it may help. Listening to all the great things that are happening throughout the county, and I think it's great. We have parks, I've heard, on the east side, on the west side. We have parks that are being built, and we have parks that need repair. But let me take you on a little journey. In the community of Maple Hill, where a school was changed from a school to a walking path, haven't had a park, haven't had a playground in what, over forty-five years? That's a community that is here in Pender County. But I want to say, as I listened to my representative, and I thank you, Mr. Springer, great job, but I listened to you say on another occasion, would this, would you say this is an emergency? No, it would not be. Is this a concern? Yes, it is. You represent my community, and I look forward to you getting with us within the community. I'll be glad to work with you anytime. Again, my name is Cindy James Moore. I do applaud you, Dr. Tate, for having listening ears, not only for your area, but for any one of us that takes the time to see if we can ring his phone or tap on his shoulder. I applaud you for that because you're not only concerned about your locality. I thank you all, and I say to you all, please, let's make and help our communities be a community that we are proud to see our tax dollars set and spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
On deck, Louis Saunders.
Ms. Saunders, good to see you.
Hey, my name is Frankie Saunders and I live at ninety Murray Town Road. And by now, you all should know that, but I should do it anyways. And honestly, I've been up here so much, I need to bring my water with me. I want to talk about a couple of things tonight. Just recently, a neighbor of Commissioner Jerry Groves posted on Facebooks, Facebook saying this board already voted to raise our property taxes to, by fifteen to twenty percent. Now, I'm not saying that's true. I don't know. But after all, every one of you Commissioners swore you would not vote to raise our taxes. But it is the public, but if it is, the public ought to hear that straight from you and not from a Facebook post. And if it's not, then someone needs to say so out loud before folks start panicking about, over their tax bills. Either way, it shows we got ourselves a communication problem. And I've stood here before more than once asking for simple transparency. When the board changed the paper of record without letting the folks or the Pender County citizens have any input, they didn't, that didn't sit right at all, and it still don't sit right. Then came the Pender EMS and fire merger, and again, no real opportunity for citizens to weigh in before the decisions were made. We are scared that people's lives and property damages and higher taxes are born to pay the price for this. So tonight, I'm respectfully asking the board to start giving monthly public updates on both of these items. The Pender Post and Paper of Record and the EMS and Fire merger, so that we, the people, can stay informed as things move forward. Because at the end of the day, you work for us, not the other way around. And Chairman Burton, I want to speak to you directly. You've now had two incidents that happened right in front of you. One involving me personally and another involving three young interns, and neither one has been publicly addressed. Now, I've raised a few kids and grandkids in my time, and I know one thing for sure. When you don't address bad behavior, it doesn't magically go away or disappear and fix itself. It just gets worse. So tonight, I'm asking you to uphold the dignity of your office, to denounce the inappropriate behavior and to hold the board members involved, including Jerry Groves and Commissioner Jerry Groves and Commissioner Brent Springer accountable. The people of Pender County are asking for the moon. We just want leaders who are honest, respectful, and transparent. Leaders who do the right thing even when it's uncomfortable. Sometimes the truth stings a little, but it sure beats being left in the dark. I thank you for your attention.
Can I get a copy of that Facebook post, please?
Yeah, yeah, I'll get it.
Can you afford to make the copy? I'll pay you.
I got a copy machine.
December the first, you can sign up to run for Commissioner.
I wouldn't have your job.
Why come?
Because, listen, I don't have the temperament to, that you guys can sit up there and say one thing and then do another.
Ms. Saunders, thank you for your time.
Well, he asked me.
I understand.
Mr. Chairman, let me, I do want to respond to this. This board has had no discussion on taxes that I've been a part of. And I think we all would, I know me, would never vote for a twenty to thirty percent. And you look at my history when I was on the board before, we don't, we don't vote on tax increases like that. And I don't know where, you know, it's kind of low when people have to tell lies in order to get a message out and get its sensation. That is totally false. We don't have budget hearings until May or until February to look at preliminary hearings and then go back in May, and the budget's not even decided to put into June thirtieth. So how would we be having those discussions now about a twenty to thirty percent? Our fund balance is higher than it's ever been. That's a total false lie.
It is.
And my patience is getting real tired for people just deliberately lying.
Well, we're, they're gonna hear it tonight. Maybe you get some prepared remarks from somewhere else next time because that was a bald-faced lie about raising taxes. A bald-faced lie.
I, I'm not involved with the other, ma'am. I don't know what you're talking about.
Call your next caller.
Louis Saunders.
Mr. Saunders is passing.
John Philippi with Jeff Cale on deck.
Mr. Philippi, welcome.
Thank you for your time, Commissioners and everybody involved. Can you hear me well?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. I'm a resident of Hampstead. I live at two nineteen Ravenswood Road. And it's involving the Piver Track. As you know, there's a saying in Hampstead. It's called the Hampstead Crawl. And also, if you're going to Wilmington, make sure you take a change of clothes, water, food, because you don't know-
Only from seven to ten AM.
You don't know when you're gonna get home. Okay, you think I'm kidding, but we had three accidents this week. I could not get out of my neighborhood because Country Club was backed up all the way, and you know this, to Transfer Station Road because everybody was coming down Sluape Point Road trying to come up Country Club to exit back on seventeen, which doesn't work. So you're going to approve the Piver Plan with three hundred and fifty-eight homes and a red light at, at the intersection of Spring Garden Road in front of the clubhouse. We need your help. I'm not here to complain. We need your help. We want you to make some changes. As far as the moratorium's concerned, you're looking for a reason. There's your reason. You can't move. If your children are on a school bus and you're sitting on a road for two hours, isn't that a safety concern? Can the ambulance get to them? Could the fire truck get to them? No, and you're all aware of this. You live at our end of town, Mr. George. If they put a stoplight in front of your house, what do you think's gonna happen? Yeah, right. It's gonna blow up, just like they're blowing up Country Club Road. So please, we're asking for your help. We're not here to beat your ear in. We need help and we want you to... We're not asking to stop the development. We want you to reduce it to two hundred homes. And you could do that because it does not meet the fire code requirement for two exits. There's only one way in, one way out. And we know what they're trying to do up in Raleigh, the little gravel driveway. That does not meet code. So again, I thank you. Please, we want your help. And also, when you come to Hampstead, bring your food, clothing, and blanket. Thank you.
Be headed back there tonight. Thanks, sir.
On deck, Joan Portland.
I'm Jeff Cale. Resided at two eighteen Ravenswood Road for the last almost twenty years. And I want to continue on about this Piver Track. Traffic is unbearable. Every day, we hear sirens. I think, I think we're living in a big city because you hear sirens all the time. Accidents, fire, you name it. But what I think may help us get a, maybe not a moratorium, but slow this down, is every day, there's a life and death situation, life or death. And that's because either the fire truck can't get to a house that's on fire because it's blocked by traffic or an ambulance can't get to an accident or to one of the old age homes, which I'm not in yet, but because someone had a heart attack or a stroke or something else happens. First thing that's gonna happen is people are gonna say, well, why didn't the ambulance get there? Why didn't the fire truck get there? House was on fire. It burned to the ground. Well, traffic. And what's gonna happen? Then the lawyers get out. The lawyer's gonna get together with people, okay, do you have, you had any problems with this? There's gonna be lawsuits. Life or death. Death of a person is irreplaceable. To add to the problem right now, the traffic light that John just mentioned, when the bypass phase one opens up, Transfer Station Road's gonna be dead-ended. So all the traffic, the refuse trucks, the construction demolition, debris trucks, everybody going to the Transfer Station to dump their garbage or recycle, has to use Country Club Road only. Can't get out to seventeen. All the people living in the houses that are being built on one side of Transfer Station Road, and soon, there's a proposal for another development on the other side of the road. Where are those cars gonna go? Three hundred and fifty-eight added from Piver, more on those two roads. So once the phase one of the bypass opens up, there's a little bit of a save there. People get on the bypass, drive to two-ten, take two-ten back to Hampstead, the traffic light by CVS. And what do they do? Get right back into the fold of all this traffic. So they drove five or six miles to bypass one mile of traffic just to come right back to it. Or they have to go all the way out to I forty, go into Wilmington. So, I mean, it's, it's just, it's bad. It's getting worse. And I don't know what else to tell you, but if you think about life or death and any lawsuit that could come up, that, that might be another little nail in the coffin of getting a delay until maybe the bypass is totally completed. I thank you for your-
Thank you, sir.
Chair, I don't usually do this in the public comment, but I do just want to clarify something.
Sure.
Transfer Station Road will not dead-end. It'll, it'll be a runoff lane. If you go online, you can look at a YouTube video and it kind of shows it if you slow it down. It'll merge into northbound and you'll have to come up and make a U-turn at Belvedere to get, go back south. But it won't dead-end. You'll still be able to get to seventeen to go north. And there's also a proposal, just for your pleasure, of a stoplight eventually at the other end of Ravenswood for the Sheetz traffic. So you'll, you'll be stuck in the tooth. The part of the TIA for the Sheetz project has them reviewing that. There's complaints of their traffic turning around in Ravenswood and going through the apartment or the condo complex right there on Ravenswood Extension. And part of that TIA requires them to evaluate the possibility for a stoplight at that intersection. So there'll be seventy-five foot from the one on seventeen, there'll be another stoplight.
We'll be joining Wilmington with stoplights every nineteen feet.
Ms. Portland, you're up. Susan Christie's on deck.
Yes, ma'am, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just want to start out saying one thing, that recently I've become aware of what a challenging job you have, that you have people on this side that you need to help and people on this side that you need to help. And I appreciate the job that you're doing and you're trying to help. I know you're trying to help us too, so I appreciate that. My name is Joan Portland. My husband Jeff and I live at four thirty-eight Widget Drive in Old Point. We are exceedingly concerned for the safety of our beautiful community of Old Point. The traffic situation is a desperate, is desperate right now. I was in a terrible accident not too long ago. A car accident coming out of Old Point onto the night, onto the seventeen. My car was totaled. I'm so thankful that I received as little harm as I did. But it was a terrifying situation. I could remember my car spinning around and I'm thinking, what's happening? Am I dead or alive? I mean, it was really frightening. Our families have, um, um... My second concern is education. I am a recently retired school teacher and I have had so much experience in the classroom with overcrowded classrooms. And I tell you, teachers care about their students. They want to do everything they can to make that student succeed in every way. But when you have an overcrowded classroom, it is impossible to give all those children all the guidance and instruction and help that they need. The reason I'm saying this is because we are now faced with three hundred and fifty-eight more homes in our community. Now, three hundred and fifty-eight, three hundred and fif-
Yes, ma'am, your time has run out.
Ms. Christie, you're up.
But I think we understand. Thank you, Ms. Portland.
On deck, John Morris.
Susan Christie, three-six-seven Old Point Loop Hampstead. Good evening. First, I want to say I'm genuinely grateful that you all made the motion to move the hearing for the location of the Piver Development. We are grateful for that. I am still left wondering as to why the citizens are doing the research and why you all haven't been already diligently working to find a way out of the high-density development nightmare that is unfolding upon your constituents in Hampstead. What are you waiting for? A catastrophe? High-density, low-quality developments are already a hindrance and a burden upon the county, stressing our infrastructure. And do not be delusional. If it continues at this pace, it will impact our property values in a very negative way. Hampstead's infrastructure has been stumbling, forced to work at well beyond its capacity. Emergency services, medical schools, already stretched beyond their limits. As to public safety, well, we're already in danger. Last week, we had three accidents on seventeen within five miles of each other, all at the same time. That backup caused people to be trapped in their neighborhoods. They could not get out. What if there had been a fire? What if there had been a medical emergency? Roads like Country Club, they can't just go around through parking lots to get through. The ambulance can't get through now. But Commissioners, what are you going to do when you face a class-action lawsuit when an entire neighborhood is trapped and hundreds die in a hurricane? Are you gonna worry about the lawsuits then? Your constituents are begging you to act. They are giving you the political cover you need to fight against the big developers. You have been informed of the tools you already have to get us out of this mess. And let me be clear, hiding behind North Carolina Dot's responsibility of the roads isn't going to work because we understand it's you all that are crowding the roads. That is your responsibility not to crowd the roads, and you're not heeding that. So I'm asking you, once again, no pleading with you, to have the courage to change course, meet the challenge and have the integrity to do what is best for the Pender County citizens. Be the leaders and protectors of this county you were elected to be. Force the law, the low-end developers to go elsewhere. Use every tool in your authority to pause the high-density developments. Pass a text amendment. Use your authority to immediately change the zonings of all not-yet-approved high-density developments to PUD. Find a lawyer willing to take on the lawsuits and be the heroes we need you to be. Thank you.
Ms. Morris, you're up. Next, Ben Stockdale.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. My name is John Morris. I live in the Old Point community. I've done so since 2016. And I live at seven oh nine Green Tea Road. I'm a retired civil engineer with forty-five years of experience, including over twenty in land development engineering. My particular concern is the private track. First, I support previous comments made by Ivan Bloom and other people who are talked about concerned over the private track. My specific concern is access to that property. This is a safety issue. One access for three hundred and fifty-eight homes is grossly inadequate under any circumstance. The second proposed access is simply a gravel, private gravel driveway between two houses. It's not very wide and it's not set up to handle emergency vehicles. I am sure you remember what Florence did to our community. I was here. You all were here. US forty was flooded out for how many weeks? Our local roads, including Spring Garden Road, Spring Garden was flooded out for four or five days. No one could in, no one could get out. No one could in, no one could get out. Now, we're talking about three hundred and fifty-eight people trapped and not being able to get in or out and with no ability to get emergency vehicles in or out. We cannot affect the frequency or the intensity of hurricanes. But we can plan and approve land development that makes our residents less vulnerable to future weather events. I believe you have the power to make that happen, particularly for the Piver Track. You just need the courage to use that power. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Stockdale, you're up. On deck, Walter Davis.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ben Stockdale and I live at one zero-two West Woodridge Drive in Durham, North Carolina. I work for Birch Creek Development as the Senior Project Manager for Coastal Pine Solar. It's a proposed solar farm located about five miles northwest of Burgaw. Coastal Pine would generate about four hundred thousand dollars annually in property tax revenue for Pender County, amounting to over eight million dollars in the lifetime of the project, without requiring county services such as roads, sewer, schools, or emergency services. In 2022, Coastal Pine Solar submitted a special use permit in compliance with Pender County's zoning standards. Despite meeting the legal requirements for approval, the project was denied at that time. Given our substantial investment, Birch Creek was forced to file suit to appeal that decision, simply because we had a lawful project that met the requirements in this quasi-judicial proceeding. Unfortunately, this has placed both the county and our company in costly litigation, diverting the resources that could instead be creating local benefits. Let me be clear, this is not the outcome that we wanted. I was not personally involved in the original zoning proceeding, but I recognize that our early community engagement was lacking and that's why I'm here today. And since taking over the project earlier this year, I've made it a priority to change that and engage Pender County as best we can. Birch Creek, my company, is now a member of the Burgaw Chamber of Commerce, where I quickly learned that it's Burgaw and not Burgaw. I've attended community events like the annual Blueberry Festival. I've met with local leaders to better understand Pender County's priorities. Based on that input, our commu-, our company has put forward a comprehensive settlement proposal that reflects our intention to be a strong and valuable economic partner to this county. This offer includes a wildlife corridor through the project, designed with the county input to maintain natural animal migration patterns and enhance local conservation efforts. A fifty thousand dollar payment to the county upon the start of construction unrestricted so that the county can use it for whatever it deems most necessary. The conveyance of two hundred acres of land valued at over one million dollars for conservation or public use, again, at the county's discretion. This is two hundred acres that Pender County can use and preserve, decide how you see best for this land. Chairman Burton, earlier you expressed a desire for developers that want to partner with you and to partner with this public. We want to be that developer. That's why I'm here today and I hope you see that my engagement here is a demonstration that we do want to go above and beyond with you. We want to work with you. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stockdale. One, one thing before you go. What was the outcome of that litigation?
It's, it's still pending.
But what was the original outcome?
It is also still, it is still, it is still pending. So there's, there's the Superior Court and then there's also the federal complaint as well, and both are, both are unresolved.
I thought, I thought it was on appeal or something.
So it is, so yeah, it is.
Okay, you, you lost the first one and you appealed it, right?
I, I would have to-
Just in transparency.
I would have to have my, my attorney speak to that, but-
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just very briefly, you're absolutely right. We, the county prevailed in Superior Court with a judge from Richmond County. It wasn't, you know, a, a, a local judge for us. We, there was a, a ruling, in fact, three-oh ruling in the Court of Appeals. That opinion is been, is under reconsideration, but it's still those, those judges, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Hello, my name is Walter Davis. I live at eighteen fifteen Highway one thirty-three in Rocky Point. I'm here to talk about district voting in Pender County. I've spoken several times with some of the board members and would love to speak to the rest of them after this meeting or whenever you see me. What I'm requesting the board do is pass some sort of resolution with a vote officially saying that the board wishes Pender County to transfer from at-large to district voting. And then I understand you may not have the authority to change that yourselves, but getting in contact with those who do to try to work towards making the switch is what I'm asking. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Appreciate you coming up.
Mitchell Clark, up next, Ben Wesper, on deck.
Welcome, sir.
Um, Mitchell Clark, six fourteen Ravenswood and Hampstead. I was going to bring notes, but I figured I'd deviate from them anyway, so. Uh, here to kick the mule about the Piver Track. Obviously, uh, I'm a former firefighter. It is a disaster in the, in the making. Hate to see it happen, but it just happened at Surf City. You lose one house and you lose three or four with it. It's going to happen and especially gas leak, natural disaster. Just hate to see it happen, so. My biggest, bigger request would be rezoning. Get off this high density. I would like the county to look at places like Piver. That would make a great park. A pool. A solar farm, anything other than more houses. We have much, we need the green space. And we're not getting it. And, uh, Mr., um, Hartley, Hantley? Um, Brentley, uh, when he was giving his first speech, I looked up at the county seal and I said, oh, there it is. The, uh, last developer taking the last tree out of Hampstead for another house. Thank you.
Sir, 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 I got a statement. I want to make a statement to you. I voted against seven hundred and fifty homes on three hundred acres in Rocky Point. I'm totally against cluster homes.
Thank you.
But let's see if that makes the paper.
Thank you, sir.
Ben Wesper.
Wester, Mr. Wester.
Mr. Wester? Ben Wesper.
Wester? Mr. Wester or like, may have left.
That's the last sign out, Ms. Chairman.
All right. Okay. So with the public comment being over, we'll switch and go to the consent agenda. Items eight point one through eight point six, and I'll take any, um, discussion or motion to approve such.
Make a motion.
Motion's on the table to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda is passed. Wow. So, item nine, approvals and resolutions, nine point one, Mr. White. Come on up and talk to us about the playground and your solution for us to help the children.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and fellow Commissioners. Hopefully the mic is working. I do have a, a few slides. I'll just show kind of the current conditions and where we're heading, if that works. So originally, the playground was, the original playground at Hampstead Kewanas Park, uh, was installed in around two thousand and five and it has served our community well for, uh, over twenty years now and it's a, a daily destination for many, uh, family members. Uh, over those twenty years, uh, we've experienced heavy uses due to our coastal environment. Uh, as you can see, some of the rust here, um, and it's kind of, uh, as it's been stated before, it's kind of rusting from the inside out from the report that we got from the Association of County Commissioners. So, uh, this has been on our radar for quite a few years now. Within the last two months, we've had several citizens that have reached out to myself and our staff about the conditions of the playground. So we did want to call in the risk manager with the Association of County Commissioners to kind of, uh, help us to make sure that we're, that we're, uh, looking at everything, and that we're doing the right thing, because we, we certainly want our parks and our, all of our facilities to be safe for everyone. So multiple concerns were identified by the, uh, risk manager and, uh, and, you know, playgrounds are a space for, where children obviously develop physically, socially, and emotionally, uh, as several citizens here tonight have, have expressed that there are, there are certainly benefits to playgrounds. So the new playground, um, and these are just some more, sorry, I'm like, I feel like I'm rambling. But the new playground will kind of, uh, with it, will stay within the existing footprint of the playground that we are requesting to be removed from service. So, uh, it will be minimal site work. Uh, we're going to use the existing playground, uh, mulch borders to help reduce the cost. The unit that staff are proposing does have a coastal package now, uh, which means it's a thicker powder coat that should withstand the coastal environment a little bit better, uh, longer term. That way, going back, so we, that way we can eliminate hopefully some of these, uh, pieces. And I, I would like to add on this too. Back in twenty twenty-three, we went, uh, these, the top pitcher, uh, is kind of like the support holding up the roof of the playground. We actually went in and had a contract to replace all of those and this is the secondary, uh, impact that we're seeing. Uh, so it is a, it is an ongoing issue that we have. Uh, so like going back to what the coastal package, uh, this is the only vendor that we've found that offers this coastal package. Uh, the town of Surf City has also, uh, installed similar units and, uh, are, are seeming to be doing pretty well. They're holding up pretty well for them. So, uh, this is a one-time capital expense, uh, not a recurring operating cost. Uh, during the budget process earlier this year, uh, staff, we, we were advised that this could, uh, be funded from the County General Fund. Procurement for this particular unit will be handled, handled through our Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op. Uh, and Ms. Blue can talk more about purchasing co-ops, but I'll give like the quick overview. Basically, it costs the county no, uh, it's, there's no, uh, membership fee for us to be a part of and they help us bid out, um, things that other local governments within North Carolina are buying, such as a playground. So it saves us staff time and ultimately money here in Pender County. Uh, and it is, uh, fully compliant with our purchasing policy as well as the state's. Am I correct in saying that? So, uh, in summary, uh, sta-, uh, staff are respectively requesting approval for the purchase order and the attached BOA, uh, for the playground replacement for Hampstead Kewanas Park. And I will happily answer any questions that I can and Ms. Blue as well.
Can you show us where someone got hurt, the piece?
So-
If you can.
Uh, I, I, I don't, Commissioner George, I don't know that I can do that. I don't think I have a picture on here, but we can certainly, uh, talk about that. But, um, I, I'm, I'm trying not to say too much. Because I don't know where that's at, uh, with our, with our insurance.
Mr. White?
Yes, sir.
Um. Where do we, the Kewanas Park, um, the Kewanians, the contract and all, where do we stand with them right now as far as their partnership with us?
So currently, we still have a partnership with the Hampstead Kewanas Park, Inc. And kind of, uh, uh, I believe we can share that, that, uh, official document with everyone. But kind of that gives-
Do they want, I mean, are they going to partner with us on helping replace the playground since they have a vital part in the community and they have concessions and they make money on the community?
So, uh, currently, uh, I, I have a meeting scheduled with them for this Thursday. Uh, currently, uh, they did give up the concession stand rights, so we have, uh, the, uh, Topsail Ball Club and Topsail Girl Soft Bar are running that. They still do hold the outfield signage rights to sell that. Uh, and part of the contract is they're supposed to, uh, that money is supposed to be reinvested in Kewanas Park.
Okay. Tell them we need a little help.
Yeah, yes, sir. And one of the things that they're looking at, um, is kind of replacing some of the exercise equipment around the park with some of their money. And they also have the turkey trot coming up, um, I guess in two weeks now and, and that money is supposed to go back into the park as well, too.
They need to visit the bathrooms at the facilities out there, too. I understand they're abysmal.
Yes, um, we, we are, we are working through that with our facility staff.
There to utilize that stuff and it needs to be in, in good shape.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And, uh, bathroom partitions and all of that, we are working through that with facilities as we speak.
And I agree, you know, there is issues out there, but we have been, we have been talking cameras at the park, uh, surveillance cameras for eons now. We have them at the trash dumps. We still don't have them at the park where the kids are at. The ba-, the brand-new bathrooms at the new addition got completely demolished, um, what, a week after they, two weeks after they, it opened?
Yes.
Um, that's a constant struggle and there's no way, I know you can't put cameras in bathrooms, but you can't put cameras on buildings and get an idea who's frequently, frequenting those. So I would like to push for that, too, is eventually, let's make sure we get the cameras there, because we've been talking about those for years and that, that is a, that should be a top priority over monitoring a trash dump, in my opinion.
It's not that big of an expense for cameras.
And I know, uh, the, our IT staff, they are working through some design, yeah. And, uh, we, we will, we will certainly follow up with it.
It's like this playground equipment, we've been working on this for several years, too. Some things we just work on. So it's time to move on the cameras, too, because I, I go out to the park quite a bit, as you know, I'm out there at night with my wife walking and, and I'm not, you know, we have issues out there that need to be addressed and then the only way you're going to address them is with surveillance after the park closes, because that's when it's, that's when a lot of that's going on. You can see it during the, the time you're out there, when the lights are on, what's, what's going to happen when you leave because of what's there when you leave, but without surveillance there, there's no way to catch it.
Yep.
I fully support this for several reasons. One, I, I've been at that park since it was built. Um, I'm there quite frequently with my granddaughter. I see the condition of the playground. I see the abuse it takes, not from people abusing it, but just the abuse of the use. Um, it's, yesterday, Sunday, I came by there and the place was packed. I mean, they were parked on the side of the road. The whole park was packed and it's like that every day from March until the end of November. This playground, even during COVID, when I was working as a park attendant and the park, the playground was closed, officially closed, there wasn't a day that went by, there wasn't ten or fifteen or twenty-plus people using the playground, even when it was technically closed according to the governor.
And good for them.
According to the county. So it, it got, it always gets used, even during the winter months, there's people on that playground. It does need to be something done to it before someone gets hurt. You, I questioned about Kewanas Park and I do know that they, they raise money to put back into the park. That's always been their goal and a mission. I do know that they have plans, I think, to fund the next, um, picnic pavilion, possibly. There, that was one of their goals that they were raising money for. Um, they funded the ones that we have there now.
Yep. And if I can add to that, they, they have, uh, one of their other projects that they've started raising money for is for the fifth diamond field out there and I, I can provide that later to the board.
They do great work, they do. We just want to stay on their radar about, help us if you can. Yeah, they do, they do. I know several, several friends of mine are Kewanians and they do great work. They do.
Yep.
Mr. White, can you find out how much they're going to be willing to put into this, uh, within two weeks?
Uh, yes, sir, I can, um, I'm scheduled to meet with some of them on Thursday, so I can, I can find out then if that works.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. No, I was going to ask the wishes of the board on nine point one.
I share the same sentiment as, uh, Commissioner George, uh, and replacing this for the fact that kids are getting hurt, right? This is, this is, um, this absolutely don't need to happen, obviously, but, um, and, and I'm not opposed to voting this in, but I also like, you know, some hard numbers as far as what they're going to put in, uh, since they, you know, hold the contract for, for the, uh, park.
Yep.
I don't, Ms. County Manager, do you know where, where we stand? It seems like we've been just dragging our feet on this contract and I'm not sure where we stand as far as.
The contract with the Kewanians?
Mm-hmm.
Zach would know more about that than I do currently, but, um, we, I- Zach would know more about that than I do currently, but we, I know that there has been progress made.
Would you like to share, Mr. White, where, where we are?
Yes, I can, I can share. Because we've been without a staff attorney, we've kind of been in a, I guess the best way to say is a holding pattern. So I can.
Mr. Quentin's going to be more busy, huh?
Yeah, we're adding, we're adding it to it. But, so yes, so this week, I mean, I can get with Ms. Blue and the legal team and we can, we can bring that back up if that works.
Yeah, that'd be fine. So next.
I don't think the, the contract is going to bring in a whole lot of revenue by changing the contract. I think the contract that being negotiated is, is for naming rights of fields and, and, you know, who controls the signage on the, on the fields, which will bring in, if it stands as it was originally proposed, that, that will bring in money to help the, the rec partners as it does at Bergall Park. They'll give them the opportunity to raise funds with their programs. I don't think it'll be a whole lot of extra windfall of money for this project.
Okay. Does, does Kiwanis Park close down in the wintertime?
No, it never.
No, sir.
No. Is there a reason why Bergall Park closes down in the wintertime?
Well, if, for athletic fields, we close for winter maintenance, yes, sir. All, all the athletic fields close for that.
Okay. What all goes on during the winter months?
So when our turf goes dorm, dormant, we try to preserve the turf to ultimately save us money from not having to repair in the spring. So from the Friday after Thanksgiving to the Monday following, Monday of President's Day in February, our fields are closed because that's when our, like I said, our turf's dormant. So for the diamond fields, what we try to do in that timeframe is laser grade the fields that need to be fixed. And we'll also do like some, some sod patching in areas on the multipurpose fields. But ultimately, it's just to kind of preserve them so that when spring seasons roll around, that we, we have good quality fields to play on.
So do we have any plans to get any more laser graded in Bergall?
Yes, sir. We have a laser, our advisory board update, adopted a laser grading plan. That way, we don't have to do them all at one time. So ultimately, we want to have them on a three-year rotation. So I, I, don't, don't quote me. I can call you tomorrow and give you an update, but Field Three should be the next field at Pender Memorial Park that's on the laser grading plan, which is the big field at the back.
Okay. I, I would also like to copy that plan, too.
I can, yes, sir. I can.
Long as it's getting done in the wintertime instead of during the spring when everybody.
Yeah, and that was a disaster. So, you know, for the record.
Can we make sure that we have some insurance or something on this equipment to make sure? I was on the board when we built Kiwanis Park. And it certainly has aged. It's been a long time. But can we make sure that this investment tonight, that we have some type of, do all of our due diligence to make sure? Because the gentleman did make a good point. When you're dealing with salt air and salt water, that's sort of salt water. I think that we need to make sure we get good quality material.
Yes, sir.
And then I know you've also have a plan to address the other parks areas in the county, too, right?
Yes.
I think Maple Hill is up next, I was told.
Yeah.
I was part of the Porter grant, right?
Yeah, so Maple Hill, and, and we can schedule a meeting with Ms. Moore. But Maple Hill is one of our top priorities for our advisory board to, to make a plan.
Please do that.
Yeah. When I went and rode with you that day and looked at Kiwanis Park and we went to Maple Hill, all those areas, I know that they're on the list next to have that happen. So I don't want to feel that she's oversight it tonight.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly schedule that meeting. I can invite the board.
I'm sure she knows some of the citizen stakeholders in that area, Mr. Leslie Green and Ms. Moore and some of them that would be willing to help her.
Yes, sir.
What are the wishes on nine point one if the discussion is over?
I'm making a motion to approve nine point one as presented.
Motion to approve nine point one in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Item nine point two, Sheriff Cutler. Come on in, sir. I see you in the back row back there.
Mr. Chair, can we, can we table this item?
It would be a motion to do that, sir.
I make a motion to table the item, nine point two.
There's a motion on the, motion on the table to table nine point two. Is there a second sufficient?
Are you in favor of that? I'll second it.
All right. Motion and a second. All those in favor of tabling item nine point two, signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Opposed, one. Sheriff will revisit nine point two, sir. It's been tabled. Uh, two, two weeks? Okay. So it'll be next meeting? Okay. Next meeting, sir. Yes, sir. Item nine point three, Mr. Brantley.
Hello again.
Yes, sir. We, this is the item that he gave a presentation on to prior and it's coming before us now.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the 2050?
I recommend option number two, if I could amend the, the motion, friendly amendment. Option two allows us to take the changes of the planning board.
Option two, the request that the changes of the planning board is identified in the memo and motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Raise your hand. Aye. Thank you, Mr. Brantley.
Thank you, everyone, very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your diligent, hard work on this. Next up, the UDO. So get your pencil ready.
That's right. Coming soon.
Yes. And please use the word common sense a lot in that document.
Yes, sir. It's become a catchphrase in our department.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right. Item nine point four. Ms. Blue, budget ordinance amendment to create emergency services org and advertise for emergency services director.
Yes. So this is part of our transition team process. It is for six months' worth, to clarify, of a salary and benefits for an emergency services director so that we can begin advertising, we're not, we can't advertise for a position we don't have budgeted or created. So this would just create the position and it would allocate the budget for the six months that we anticipate would be allocated towards that salary.
All right. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Is, Ms. Blue, can we, can we incorporate in the same motion to find out if we need, can advertise for a grant writer? To start looking for some grants and writing grants to get, the lady in the crowd earlier mentioned something about grants for playground equipment. And that's what sparked my interest.
Sure.
To.
We actually, I think Zach looks into those grants as well. A lot of different playground manufacturers have those grants as well. I would hesitate to say yes. I would suggest that it be a separate motion only because, I mean, I don't have a job description or a grade or a budget for that yet.
But we could go ahead and approve it and y'all formulate the job description, right?
You could, but I'd probably have to bring it back with the actual budget amendment.
What's the problem with just putting that on the, the agenda for the next meeting?
Okay.
About that?
I'd be glad to.
Okay, thank you. Make a motion to approve nine point.
All right. Motion's on the table for approve nine point four. Is there a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Shelders, Madam Clerk, item nine point five.
Yes, sir. There was a county commissioner's meeting schedule calendar for next year in there. The town meetings were put in there because it had been suggested that we needed some.
Okay.
You can approve it with those or you can approve it without them.
What are the wishes of the board?
Can I ask for one, one change if possible? The, the March 12th, I will be out of state. Then this, the town hall in Hampstead, is there a way to change, either flip that date or change it to another date?
Should be, yeah, it should be fine. She was just, we were looking at the calendar, trying to make sure we were.
Okay, I mean, that's fine.
You're just spacing them out.
Okay.
Maybe we can just switch the locations.
Yeah, the Hampstead and the Bergall. I make a motion to approve the commissioner's calendar.
Motion's on the table in a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Raise your hand. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thanks so much.
So, Mr. Chairman, may I say something, please?
Yes, because we're at item 10 for discussion.
All right, let me say something. Earlier tonight, Ms., I think it was Ms. Frankie, because I've got to know her name. Ms. Saunders came to the podium.
Yes.
And she said that it was suggested by someone on Facebook that it was a 20% tax increase or 30%. And that baffled me so much, I, I responded and said that I wanted to clarify if that had been a discussion. I was not a part of that discussion, Ms. Frankie. And that was a, and there was someone, and because I had received that knowledge from a phone call earlier today, someone else shared that with me and I thought that person was just fabricating it, not necessarily fabricating. I thought they were just sharing something that they didn't have all the facts on. So I wish I would have took that call much more serious because many times we get calls that are embellished by people on Facebook and so forth. So I don't go off Facebook. So when you came tonight and you said that, I, I just, first of all, if that, the call I had got earlier said that it had been discussed in closed session. So in my first call, what my comment was, if it was in closed session, well, who, it's only five of us in here in closed session and staff, who went out and told it? Who violated the law? That was my first point. Someone, if they told it, it violated the law, if we're on this board. Secondly, my point was to say, someone was out there spreading false information to the citizens and to you and everyone else. And that's not fair. It's not right to get people that upset. I represent the county, but also I live in one of the poorest districts in the county. When my citizens heard that tonight on phone, I started immediately getting texts, you're going to raise the taxes 20 or 30%? And I immediately wanted to respond and say, that's a lie. That's not true. That wasn't a discussion that happened. It was no way in calling you a lie at all. It was saying whoever spread it was telling a lie. And just like I planned, I'm not, somebody, I plan to protect my character. I've allowed in the past people to say things and not challenge it legally. This time I will. And so when I hear someone say something false, I plan to address it right then. So it was no way calling you that. It was calling the person who's spreading that information that. Unless there's conversations happening that I wasn't privy to. And that's possible.
And I would concur with Dr. Tate with his sentiments to the exact measure. Any other?
So please understand that was not directly at you and it was certainly not calling you that. It was calling whoever spreaded that information.
There, there's a lot of folks that take pride in trying to scare citizens and, and, and spread, and spread mistruths. And, you know, and you can call it what you want, it's a lie. I've always had, since I took this office, I've always stated it is my goal not to raise taxes on the citizens of Pender County and I will not stand for it, period. And it's memorialized now forever. I will not. And I will not support it. So, any other discussion?
Chair Burton, I'm going to jump in here.
Yes, please do.
Slander is a criminal offense. Trey Thurman. I think there was a tag to my Facebook page and I know who wrote the tag and I know who tagged it. False information was spread in this room tonight and it's despicable that someone would come to the podium and accuse me of posting a 10 or 15% tax increase when I never done it. So, Mr. Trey Thurman.
Yes, sir.
We have a lawsuit and we'll talk about that in closed session.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for your comment.
Well, I didn't hear her say that anybody that she accused anybody. I think she said she heard a neighbor say that or someone that to degree. And then the other thing, and I want to move on to something else, talking about why we own this subject, I don't normally do it, Chairman, but let me say this one last point. You know, as we go into this upcoming season that we're in, we always know that when folk can't win on their own merit or on, they don't, may not have the qualification of other people, they sometime have to tack. And we live in an environment now, Pender County wasn't like it was 10 or 20 years ago when people won, they, they ran elections fairly. Today, folks will lie, just deliberately lie. And you can't defend that. I spent, cannot tell you how much legal fees in the last election defending things that was just totally false to a point that I got to that I just couldn't continue to do that. I mean, I've, I've heard things in the last couple of weeks about that legal concerns were reported to me that misappropriations were going on with the county budget. And when it came to inspection dollars for, we were spending inspection dollars to the county and the county manager was doing that and by coding environmental health dollars with dollars came in general permitting. When that was reported to me first, since several people have shared that back to me to clarify that tonight, when that was first reported to me, I immediately said that we need, I talked to this, to the board and staff that we wanted that issue investigated. And then when I heard it again this week, I immediately called and asked for an investigation of that item and went to legal counsel and asked them to investigate that, I believe, and Madam Manager, you can confirm, and I think you can, Mr. Attorney, I asked y'all to review that at the state level and contact every state resource it was, including all the state agencies that we needed to, to investigate that. That sort of stuff takes a lot of time to clear over, then a ruling comes back, that's totally false. I didn't work 30 years building my reputation to defend that type of stuff. And I'm not doing it going forward. I mean, if I break the law, we need to be held responsible. But at the same time, it requires a state time, so much time just putting out that sort of stuff. I'm one, I wouldn't serve this state as a college president and then come back here and be a local county commissioner and cover up something about someone coding an inspection dollar. It's still, I mean, to a environmental health dollars, if you're using inspections of environmental health. Immediately when that was reported to me, I went back and shared that with this, to please look into that matter. And again, I asked for another legal review again this week and we got the ruling back that there was nothing done wrong there. Now, if that's something that those, I'm not a lawyer. So if that's something that the state and other folks are telling us is not right, I did what's do, required by me in my role to seek legal advice. So y'all have to try something else.
Thank you, Dr. Tate.
And I appreciate you doing that. Well, you gave us a chance to address it and we addressed it. And I appreciate you letting it be known because we don't want that to spread out there. And I appreciate you bringing that to our attention that that was being spread to us.
That's right.
All right. Madam Clerk, appointments.
The jury commission.
Yes. Jury commissions, we currently have three openings and we have three applications.
Okay.
We have a Jessica Justice, who's lived in Pender County for seven years and is currently employed with Quality Chemical Labs as the lead billing coordinator. She would enjoy being able to serve her community. LaTah, LaDonna Tartt has lived in Pender County for 28 years. She's currently employed with Solution Health as an Epic Applications Analyst. She feels that her experience in selecting and finding the most valuable candidates for job roles and working with diverse people makes her an ideal candidate for this board. Samantha Jones has been a resident of Pender County for 35 years. She is a member of multiple boards and feels confident that she can carry out the requirements that are required as an independent, unbiased authority, authorizer of the master list of jurors. Recommendations to approve.
All right. So item 11.1, is there a motion to approve?
Approve all three.
Motion to approve the three applicants for the three positions. Is there a second?
I think.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Raise your hand. Aye. Thank you. All right. The Parks and Recreation Board?
Yes, the Parks and Recreation Board currently has an opening for District Five with two applicants received. We have Tandra Henderson, who's been a resident of Pender County for 23 years. She's currently employed with MCCS Marine Corps Community Service as a case manager. She has been a member of Maple Hill Civic Club, Maple Hill Volunteer Fire Department, and Smart Start of Pender County. She would like to provide positive interventions and social outlets for young people. Brandy Odom has been a resident of Pender County for 20-plus years. She's currently employed with GE Healthcare as an Associate Senior Category Manager. She has served on the Pender County Parks and Recreation Board, the Heidi Truss High School Athletic Boosters, Cape Fear Middle School PTO, and the Bergall Dixie Youth. She is dedicated to improving opportunities for the community and add a voice to her community.
How many, how many openers do we have, Ms. Clerk?
It was just the one for District Five.
Did you see that action, requested the recommendation from?
My computer's shut down. I don't have my password, or I don't have the password.
The action requested that it has been recommended to let Henderson fill the District Five vacancy and open her seat at the at-large position and appoint Brandy Odom to the at-large position.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
The action requested, is that, yes, a second.
Motion and second on the table, is there? All in favor, signify, say an aye, raise your hand, aye? Alright, moving on to the planning board.
Okay, the planning board has, um, one position that's currently open, but four that will be coming available at the end of January, twenty-six. Um, so currently, we're only seeking one, and I have six applications.
So, let me ask you this before we start, will the other ones you'd be able to hold on to until?
Those, those, whoever's not selected here will be added to the other five that I already have for the end of January position, and there are several from the west side.
Oh, good.
So, this, these are west side, okay.
Yeah, I do have several from the west side. I'm not sure where these five are.
There's only one, there's only one from Atkinson, um, on this list.
On this first list, okay.
Crystal Hubble's from Atkinson, the, the remaining ones are from Hampstead.
Well, we currently have nobody on the west serving, is that correct?
Correct.
Right, Mr. Techie stepped down.
Yes.
Don't we have somebody from Burgal?
No, they're all from the eastern side right now currently.
Didn't Mr. Guidry apply?
Yes. I have Sam Guidry, um, which is an add-on, y'all probably don't have that one. And then, you said the Crystal Hubble, so that would be two from the west side.
I know he's applied like three or four times.
Yeah, I don't have him on my list.
Yeah, they asked me to add him on, he came in after I'd already presented this, you know, to the package.
There, there seems to be a breakdown about this application process, I'm not understanding. Somebody applies three or four times, and I know that they have, because I've verified it. I don't know how in the world y'all, I'm saying y'all as in the staff, are getting this mixed up. Like, we had this, we had this discussion, this was before you made clerk, obviously, and I'm not, I'm not putting the weight on you, but we had this discussion previously, and now it seems like it's coming to light. If somebody applies, that application stays open to that board's positions field, is that not what we decided on?
Uh, I don't remember, but I do know that, once that position that's opens field, usually the next person starts on a whole new.
Right, that's right.
Set, so if, if the position he applied for was filled, then he would've had to reapply. But I don't remember, I don't remember us having a, Mr. Satterfield was the last one we appointed to the, to the, and that's been several, several months ago, and I don't remember, and that was a, just, that was, he was east side, and that was only one position, so it should've closed out that, that, um, application period. And so, Mr. Guidry, um, would've had to reapply for this position, I think, because it's the new, a new position, correct?
Yep, how, how long has this, how long has this position been open, do you know? Okay.
No, I do not.
I think it's been open for quite some time, but I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't remember Mr. Um, Mr. Guidry's application. Mr. Bradley may have some information he wants to share.
Well, the good thing is, we've got some folks interested.
So, the planning board seat has been emptied since the beginning of September. And I have spoken with Mr. Guidry several times, he, he told me that he, he tried to apply.
Two months.
Probably three times. But we finally got it, it finally came through, so. And to be honest, I've had experiences with it, I've applied for a board to serve on a board here, and it spit it back out, like, it told me it was spam. It told me, it told me that it thought I was spam.
We got the best firewall.
Yeah, right, it's great, but.
Yeah, I get email, I get people that call me and say, did you get my email? I said, no, I got something that said Barracuda's got something and won't let you have it.
Right.
Okay.
Well, we need to have IT to fix it.
I concur.
I mean, we sit it, we, we in these meetings and we talk about what's wrong over and over, and then we say, okay, thank you, move on. It's, after a while, staff gonna take our concerns non-important, they're gonna say they're just venting, but they'll get over it after a couple of weeks. I mean, I had a boss like that one time in my career, he knew that if he wants to say it, he wasn't gonna come back and address it. So, at some point, if we don't hold folk accountable, or the manager do not, we're not really going anywhere. And then the citizens are upset when we're not responding. We're paying salaries in professional levels than we've ever have in this county, greater level, but we're almost walking on eggshells if we dress issues with staff.
I can assure you that IT director knows my feelings about our firewall, because I spent all weekend without email. I think Mr. Springer did too, listening to him talk this morning, because we both got locked out by logging into the annex.
I got so over-cumbersome with the telephone, the cellphone, I went and turned it in and bought me another one. I gave up on it, two weeks into the process.
The man of the hour.
So, back to this at, at hand, I have no issues with either Crystal Hubble. I do, would like to have a res- representation from the west side, and I know Mr. Jordan, I guess, if you consider districts, he would be, uh, district, the Burgal district, correct, five, he lives, and he live in?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
So, this would give.
Talking to Mr. Guidry?
Mr. Guidry does, yeah.
Mr. Guidry does too, Mr. Jordan.
So, Mr. Jordan's in the Burgal district, and then we have another member, Mr. Keeler, in the Rocky Point district. But there's no one further west.
There's no one further out.
So, would Atkinson be considered, isn't that western Pender County?
Yes, sir.
I thought Burgal was central Pender County.
Yes, sir. But a lot of people refer to everything this side of seventeen is west.
No, this side of.
Well, just, you know, but that's what I've heard a lot of.
Forty.
Right. But we do have someone on in Rocky Point, Burgal, in the, in terms of the districts, just not in Curry, that side of the county. Atkinson, you know, from a staff perspective, we'd love to see more representation from the western side.
And I would love to support Mr. Sam, I think the world of him, and I think he's a great person. And I would hope that in the next, um, in the next round, that we can make it a priority to make him, uh, get him on this board. But, I've got so many calls from people in the west over this issue, is that I, if we have a western applicant, uh, I've gotta go back home in the west tonight, I really want us to make sure we get the west representative.
Yes, sir.
That's just my one vote.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, my vote would be to vote to turn, um, to appoint the applicant from, um, Atkinson tonight.
Okay.
And nobody has a second if they don't want to, that's my vote.
And this, this seat's for?
The current seat, and there's four openings.
Oh, they're all at large, okay. So, where is, where is the other planning board members, where are their locations, do you know?
All in Hampstead.
Most of them are in Hampstead. We've got a couple in Rocky Point.
And one in Burgal, right?
One in Burgal, a couple in Rocky Point, one up near Surf City, two up in the Hampstead North Surf City area.
The four that's coming open, Mr. Bradley, where are the, where are those areas coming out of?
I think it's a mix, I think one of them's the Burgal seat, but I think that most of those are in Hampstead, definitely, definitely, because the two newer members, um, Mr. Keeler being the second newest, he's in Rocky Point.
Okay.
So, the, most of the, the seats that are turning over are in Hampstead.
And you think one of them's in Burgal?
One of them is in Burgal, I believe that, yes, sir.
I'm, I'll second Mr. Uh, or Commissioner Tate's motion.
Alright, all those in favor, signify, say an aye, raise your hand, aye? Thank you, ma'am. Miss, Miss Hubble, right? Okay. Alright, Mr. Proctor, do we need to open up any of the water and sewer districts, sir?
I need to talk to you after the meeting, Mr. Uh, Mr. Proctor.
Ms. Carolyn, uh, do we need to open up the Pender County Board of Health for your presentation? Alright, we'll open up the Board of Health, we'll have that in for the twenty-twenty-four Annual Communical Disease Report.
Right, and, um, last but not least, so, I know with the lateness, um, you've had a while to review our communicable disease report for twenty-twenty-four, and there are not a lot of changes. Um, we tend to run pretty steady numbers, as you can see, for the last four years, um, before twenty-twenty-four. Um, unless there are specific questions, I'll, I can refrain from going into much detail, and anyone's quite.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Moser on the report?
No, it's very good to read, I always like to.
Thank you.
Well, I, it's, it's not a very good subject to read on, but, uh, yeah, I understand.
When you consider there's forty-four reportable diseases
Yeah.
in North Carolina, this is all that we have, and I think, I think it's great.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Moser, appreciate it. Alright. Anything from Social Service Board? Alright, sir. Yes, ma'am. The SNAP stuff, and you, thanks you for keeping us in the loop on that, and it's unfortunate that, uh, a few senators in Washington want to keep folks from getting fed and taken care of in the states, and I'll leave it at that.
Does that mean this boy wanna help him get fed, and we make him into motion act to temporarily help?
I, I, I was, I was under that impression until I found out that the federal government subsidized nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars a month for our citizens in Pender County for SNAP. Almost a million dollars a month helps our citizens in Pender County. And for a few senators in Washington DC to keep those people from getting fed and taken care of is despicable.
For the organization I work at, we started a food pantry this week, so they can come get fed, that's fine.
And great work, Mount Calvary Center for Leadership Development does, that's the, great work they do. Mr., items for Mr. Thurman?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, consulting with, uh, Ms. Blue, just be sure I get it right. We're attorney-client, economic development, and personnel.
Okay, that's items for closed session, alright. Alright, Madam Manager?
Um, I just wanted to thank our legal team for hanging in there with us. Um, I just wanted to enter, well, I was gonna formally introduce them, I've kind of already mentioned them. Um, we're very excited to have them here with us, they're not new to Pender County, but they are new to the admin building, and we are excited.
Mr. Quentin, you and your staff, definitely welcome, welcome, welcome.
Is Mr. Morgan the lead attorney on this?
Yes.
Oh, that's wonderful. I must say that I remember when Quentin enrolled in UNCW as an undergraduate student, and his mom was crying that day, and his dad was saying it's gonna be, his dad said it's gonna be alright, and I followed him when he went on up the UNC Chapel Hill, and it's just so great, uh, when I worked at James Burn, he was a student there, and it, um, uh, no, he wasn't a student, he worked during the summer, and just a young man has always been stellar, and great parents in law enforcement and teaching, and we're just blessed to have you, and you're gonna do great for us, now that me give you a bit introduction there, you got this to see, okay?
You're welcome, buddy. Oh, yeah?
Um, I did have one other thing for the board to consider, and we don't have to make a decision on this tonight, but, um, the November seventeenth meeting is, the day after that is the agenda deadline for the December first meeting. It will be about a month and a half before we have another meeting. Um, so, we're proposing to consider a second December meeting, which would be normally, following our normal pattern, would be on December fifteenth. Um, we don't have to do that, and we can potentially see if there's a need for it closer to time. It's, that's a long time to go without being able to get something.
That's fine with me, if you wanna, the fifteenth of December, I don't have a problem with that.
But we can come with a, a potential, um, agenda to make that decision, but just wanted to put that out there.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright. Madam Clerk, anything? Commissioner Groves?
Oh, yeah, I got something, while at night. I promise you one thing, I will not sell my soul to win an election, and that's what tonight was all about. Jerry Groves won't sell his soul to win an election, don't have to. Thank you.
Commissioner George?
I just wanna thank the board for, for approving the Hampstead Quanis Park, um, playground thing tonight, that was a, a big thing for us. Uh, the people in Hampstead, I understand your struggles and your, I lived there with you. Um, Wednesday when that happened, I happened to be in downtown Wilmington, and, um, heard about it on my way home, and so, my GPS took me to Maple Hill, where I only, I beat my daughter, she only beat me to my house, and she was three miles away by about fifteen, twenty minutes. So, I understand the, the problems we have there, um. I wish there was some way to slow it down, there appears to be no way to slow it down, I wish there was some way to speed the bypass up. But there's, appears to be no way to speed the bypass up either. So, I, I've witnessed the, um, Hampstead Fire Department trying to come out during one of these traffic jams, um, when traffic's bumper to bumper, and in Hampstead, they don't give you room enough because they're scared somebody might get in between you. There's no way to back up or pull forward to let the fire trucks out of Hampstead. Um, they're in a, they're in a bad spot where that station's at right now. You, they've got the red light there, but the red light don't do no good if everybody's already stopped. So, if there, if there is a, an emergency in Hampstead, Station Two, the EMS station, can't get out a majority of time, because it's a majority of time the northbound side of the road that's clogged up, and Hampstead Fire Department cannot get out, and your next closest station is Scottsville. That's Station Eighteen, and Station Fourteen, that's, that's Lu Point. So, if you're in the middle there, you are in a, in a pretty bad, pretty bad spot with, with what we've allowed ourselves to, to do in Hampstead. Um, so, I, I feel their pain, I understand where they're coming from, I live it daily along with you. I, I wish I could offer some kind of relief. You know, the, the whole Piver property is just one of the many concerns that we should have over there. I remember very well watching the six houses burned down at Surf City, because there was not a way to get in there to those houses, um, on the peninsula. There was one way in and one way out unless you come in by boat. And they had the same problem there, coming in by boat, there's no water to come bring a fireboat in there. There was no way in, in, at the peninsula by boat, because there was no way to get a fireboat through the mud. Floyd didn't do a whole lot in that area, other than it washed a spillway out, washed on Scott, Old Point Loot Road, right at the entrance to where this neighborhood's going, and took the water lines out with it. And at Belvedere, it washed Belvedere out. So, luckily by that time, transfer station road had been put in, because that was the only entrance in and out of Old Point until those roads got repaired, um. And now, we're gonna build a, a housing development right, right there where that happened at. Uh, Floyd didn't really flood as bad down Spring Garden Road, but if they, if they could remember back to Fran, when the ice boxes from Topsail Sound Pier was setting three hundred yards up on the shore where these houses are gonna be built at. So, that was a different kind of storm surge then, Floyd, Floyd was rain, Fran was storm surge, and where these houses are at, there's a low-lying area, um, that a storm surge will definitely affect. So, I feel your pain, people in Hampstead, um, I really wish there was something I could do.
Thank you, sir. First, Chair Springer. Alright, Dr. Tate?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, it was indeed an honor to attend the, um, Spot Festival, North Carolina Spot Festival this year. It was always a great turnout to that, um, also to go to Union Rescue last night, to see the community come together. There's been a lot of community meetings so far lately, uh, to go to, talk back to lobbyists today about water in our district and our county and what's going on in that project. I look forward to continuing those conversations, and, uh, I wanna thank Charlie Rains tonight for his, um, presentation. Uh, that was very informative, and I requested that because I think citizens need to know our process and how that worked to be, because we get a lot of calls, so, thank you for also adding those other items to the agenda tonight as well, thank you.
Alright. I only have a couple of things before closed session. Um, I just wanna get on the record to say that, about development, I, I really meant what I said earlier about, I think we as government need to partner with developers, um, and builders for certain, everything's through common sense, but I'll give you one example that really is important to me to try to spearhead. I have a twenty-five-year-old daughter that is a professional that, uh, that works for the city of Wilmington, she's a crime scene investigator, she works hard forty hours a week, and most weeks overtime. She called me and she said, Dad, I wanna buy a house, and I live in Hampstead with, with her fiance, she said, but, uh, I can't find, there's nothing here less than five hundred thousand dollars. And I'd like to see, I'd like to challenge any, any developer, any builder out there to try to, let's partner together to get some communities built for some younger folks with young families that are hard-working, blue-collar individuals, to can get into a house for two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and have a community. Um, that's the, that's what I wanna do, I wanna do some smart things like that. That's the, that's what I want to do, I want to do some smart things like that, but that really hurt me when she said that. But, and the second thing, moving, we're in November. We're, we're in November, this is a time of Thanksgiving. We need to each and every one of us on this board, in the county, in our staff, our citizens look inward at what we are thankful for. I know we have our disagreements, but we're, we all need to, to look inward and we, we need to be thankful for, for one, for, for our lives, for our health, for our fellow citizens. We do live in the greatest country on the face of the planet and I think a lot of times people take that for granted and I just, I, I felt it on my heart to say that and I say it because I mean it. I've been a public servant for, I'm fifty-eight years old and I've been a public servant since I was fourteen in a volunteer rescue squad, so I can, you know, I've, I've seen people's worst day because I had to be at my best, but with the attacks, I mean nationally, locally, what, what I get every day with, with the lies and the vicious attacks that my family has to go through, each of the commissioners up here go through, our county staff goes through, it's, it takes a toll on you, it does, but I will not let it deter me from following through for the service of the citizens that I serve. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I will not let it change me, Chairman Burton.
Motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion.
All right. A motion is our second, all right. Those in favor of seeking a motion, I raise your hand. Thank you, everyone, we're in closed session.
Just let me know when it's when he's ready. Okay. All right, welcome back everybody. Commissioner Grove has made a motion to come out of closed session and Vice Chair Springer seconded that. All those in favor, signal five saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, signal five saying aye. Raise your hand.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you everyone.